Good morning, everyone. The time is 8:39. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines, Brandau, Brettafeldt, Capriolio, Chavez, Soria, and President Olivia.
Here. We'll now have the invocation by Senior Pastor Steve Williams from North Point Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Will you please stand? Ken, if you could.
You bet.
Thank you.
Pastor Steve had an eye infection and so he's not here and I'm filling in for him. Let's pray together. Father, this morning I thank you for the blessings that you give to us every day for life and health and strength. There are so many who are unable to be here because they have sickness or disease and we just thank you for the opportunity that we have to be here. And God, we are very aware that there's communities around us today that are in distress from the fires that rage on right now. And for those that have lost their homes and are displaced already, be with them and comfort them today. And watch over those who also are very anxious about what they will return home to. God, I would pray too that you would bless the many who serve our community, the many volunteers around Fresno that make this city the great city that it is. God, there will be decisions that our councilmen will make today that will affect our city and the course of the city. I ask that you will give them wisdom as they discuss and as they come to decisions. Would they know your mind as far as what direction that the city needs to take? And God, we give you thanks today for the blessings that you give to us and truly today in you do we trust. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. We now move to the approval of the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to today's agenda?
I have a couple of changes. Let's see. Item 1A, resolution should precede the summary. So it should be a resolution to authorize the Chief of Police to accept $100,000 in grant funding. And then the other change is 3C. It's being removed from the agenda by staff. Those are all the changes I have.
Okay. Are there any councilmembers who have any changes they wish to make to the agenda? Okay. Let's go ahead and approve the agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve. Moved by Member Brandau. I'll go ahead and second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to approval of the agenda? Okay, seeing none, it passes unanimously with Member Capriolio absent. Wanted to do an item of housekeeping here. There will be no City Council meeting next week on the 27th. And there will be one, however, on August 3rd. On Thursday, August 3rd, we'll replace the meeting on the 27th. Wanted to make that housekeeping announcement right now. Okay. And we approve the agenda. You know what I want to do is come back to ceremonial presentations. We'll take it out of order, but the business we're going to do is just going to take a couple of minutes. So we'll go ahead and take care of the consent calendar and then come back to ceremonial presentations. Blake, would also like to approve the minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. We have a motion and a second. Is there any opposition? Okay, the minutes pass. Let's go ahead and go to the consent calendar at this time. Are there any councilmembers who wish to remove any items from the consent calendar? Member Brettafeldt?
Yes, I'd like to remove 1G and 1Q.
1G and 1Q. Any other councilmembers want to remove anything from the consent calendar? All right. Let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address any item contained in the consent calendar today? Please come forward. Hi. Give us your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Radley Reap and I reside at 557 West Escalon in Clovis. I also wish to speak to item 1G. So would you like me to do that at this time?
At this time, please.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'd like to bring to your attention five difficulties with the MOU and agreement between the City of Fresno and the Conservancy. Very simply, first of all, the MOU that you have before you has attachment or Exhibit A. However, Exhibit A is not attached to the MOU, so I'm not sure if you have seen it or not. But there are a couple of problems with it. The first is that the MOU states that there are no third-party beneficiaries to the agreement between the City and the Conservancy. However, the agreement itself that should be attached says that there are no beneficiaries, whereas the MOU says that there are. So someone's going to need to resolve the difference between the agreement between the City and the Conservancy and the MOU between the Conservancy. And that's, by the way, section number 27 in the agreement. Three more items. The agreement says that the City is going to ask its consultant to look at two additional intersections for environmental review, but those intersections are not identified in the scope of work and nor is there any reason given for it. I think it behooves the City to identify those intersections. The fourth one...
You still have a minute remaining.
Okay. Thanks a lot. The fourth one says that the Conservancy is going to meet on August the 9th to make a decision on whether Alternative 5B is viable. And I'd like to point out that that's an environmental finding and the agreement cannot dictate that the Conservancy makes an environmental finding prior to sending out the recirculation of the draft EIR. And finally, the agreement, which I'm sure you have not seen, has added more language. It's requiring the Conservancy to send to the Conservancy the logs of all comments received, the actual comments, and all the emails. And normally, you would not be entitled to that. That is the business of the Conservancy to deal with those things. And also, it requires that... If I can make one last sentence here?
Please wrap up. Thank you.
It requires that the Conservancy send you all the information it has regarding the certifying of its EIR. And certification is the purview of the Conservancy and not the City. So what I suggest is you correct those things and bring it back to your body on August the 3rd, which will be one week before the Conservancy hears it, so there should be plenty of time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the City Council on any item that's contained on our consent calendar? Please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and return to the City Council. Member Baines?
Yes, I'd like to register a no vote for item 1T.
Member Soria?
Thank you, Council President. Same, I would like to register a no vote on item 1T.
I would also like to register a no vote on item 1T. We'll hear the...
I'll make a motion that we approve the balance of the...
We have a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar. I will go ahead and second. We have a motion to second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Seeing none, the consent calendar passes.
Council President, that would be with the exception of 1T.
Correct.
Because it would require four votes to pass.
Thank you. We'll now move to items that have been removed from consent calendar. And folks who are here for awards, thank you for being very patient with us. The first item that's been removed has been Member Brettafeldt, item 1G.
Yeah, I was just wondering if staff here who could address Mr. Reap's points? Okay.
Yep, we can handle it from here.
Yeah, I'll do this work. Scott.
Good morning, Council. In regards to this item, I want to highlight a couple of things. One is the MOU is attached in the Council's packet, so that was information that was available to the Council in advance of the meeting. Second point in regards to the MOU that has been very carefully reviewed and approved as deformed by both City Attorney's Office and by the Conservancy's legal counsel. So it does represent the structure and the relationship necessary between the City and the Conservancy. The consultant contract is ours with AECOM. However, the MOU in a nutshell says that we are doing that work and providing it to the Conservancy to be incorporated into a recirculated EIR. So both legally, we do believe, again, I'll defer to City Attorney, but we do believe we're on solid legal ground with this arrangement.
When will this analysis be completed, Scott?
The analysis, the schedule for that is by the Conservancy Board meeting. That's, I believe, the first week in August. So we are on track to meet the schedule that the Conservancy Board outlined. It's been very fast track, but we're working very closely with the Conservancy staff and legal counsel and we're going to make it. We're going to be there.
And do we have a... Following that analysis, what's the timeline to move this forward? I mean, because obviously, there's been some talk about how slow it's taken to actually get this completed and this access to the river and all of that. What are we looking at?
So then the next step would be at the Conservancy Board meeting. They'll receive a status update from the City and the consultant team of Blair Church and Flynn, who's doing the civil work, civil engineering analysis and AECOM. And then at that time, the intent is that the board, Conservancy Board, would recirculate, they'd do a limited recirculation of their EIR to include what's called Alternative 5B, this Palm needs river access. That would go out, I believe, for a 45-day public comment period. And then by the end of the calendar year, the Conservancy would be in position to certify the EIR and then potentially build the project. That said, recognizing there's still an issue of how those amenities would be maintained. The funding is there to construct, but there's still a conversation about maintenance.
At the end of the... Well, starting next year, it should actually start to be constructed.
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion to approve. And well, Steve?
Yeah, Councilman Brettafeldt, and I'll second your motion to approve. But I did want to add that, because I heard in your comments, one thing that I wanted to really clarify, the delay that you're talking about as far as bringing accessibility to the river has really, is not being impacted by the City of Fresno. So the City of Fresno, this body and this building, we're not delaying that project at all. Any delays really are within the Conservancy and have more to do with the state operations and the systems that we're going through. So, but it's, as a matter of fact, take it one step further, we've really sped up something that we are trying to accomplish in order to match their timeline. So we're doing everything really quickly.
Excellent.
Okay, so we have a motion by Member Brettafeldt and a second by Member Brandau. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition to this item? Item carries unanimously. Thank you, staff. Move now to the second item that's been removed from consent calendar, item 1Q. Member Brettafeldt?
Yeah, this is obviously a very lengthy report on different regional workforce development board, the Fresno Economic Opportunities Commission. I was just wondering if it might not be helpful for the Council to have some kind of workshop regarding the different agencies, these different boards, how they work together, how they're connected? Because I mean, this is a four-year, I guess, action plan. And maybe, Blake, you can talk about that.
Thank you, Councilman Blake Consel, Executive Director, for your Fresno Regional Workforce Board. We would love to have an opportunity to do such a workshop and to explain how we interact with all the important community partners that are involved in trying to find employment for our residents. So we'd be happy to. And we're obligated under federal law to submit these four- or five-year plans in order to continue to draw down money, but they do try to capture everything that we're doing with agencies like EOC and others.
Okay, is that something that we could schedule?
Yes, and my office will work with Blake and get something scheduled for an upcoming meeting.
Okay. And do you need this adopted today?
In order for us to keep drawing down money, yes, sir, we do.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second by Member Soria. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Item carries unanimously, 5 to 0. Thank you. All right, folks, now it's time for ceremonial presentations. And so I guess I will... Hang on. Got to find where I'm at. There we go. All right, we will... Madam Clerk, we'll do the minutes when we come back from ceremonial presentations. And will you join me, brand-new City Manager?
Okay, so are we ready to get this celebration going for our employees? So it is my honor today to be before you to celebrate a handful of our employees who have been nominated by their coworkers to receive this Employee of the Quarter award. Oops. The L just dropped. You got them?
I got them. I hope it's still in order.
So with that said, I think it's really important that we take time and stop during our day to celebrate each and every one of you for the work that you do for this organization and for the citizens of the City of Fresno. So with that, again, congratulations and thank you all for the work you do. Council President?
Thank you. Thank you. You know, I try to think of something new to say because I've had the honor of being down here to recognize our employees on a number of occasions. And it's always the same thing. You guys do such a fantastic job. But it's true, and I think that an experience that I had this past week illustrates how fantastic you guys are and how lucky we are to have the employees we do in the City of Fresno. At about 11 o'clock, what, two, three nights ago, the guy who lives across from me, he has a, maybe a 50-foot-tall sycamore in front of his home. It was really windy and the wind blew, the tree snapped, and we heard like the crack and then the whoosh as the tree fell down. It crossed, it smashed his SUV and it fell across the entire street, so it was blocking our street. So I called our City Manager and... Aren't you glad you have this job now that you get called all the time? And this is when our organization... And I always say that we're the fastest, and we really are. This is when our organization really had a chance to show how good we are. We had a resident with a smashed car, we had a street that was closed off, we had a dangerous tree. And this is how quick... Chief Donnis had fire out there within minutes with chainsaws. And they really, it was a big piece of lumber. They had to saw the tree into bits, they dragged it off. PD shows up, puts out cones and makes sure... I mean, I don't live on a busy street, but somebody, you know, speeders, they could have hit that tree and been very injured because of the way they drive in District 7. And so the tree was cleared and then the next morning, crack of dawn, our crews were out there friendly, talking with residents, cleaned up the mess, cleaned up the tree, raked the people's park strips. And, you know, I'm sure we're going to get a call from the guy with the smashed SUV now. We'll take care of that, too. But this just illustrates how good we are. And you guys, I don't know if you know me or you've seen me or heard of me, I'm very, very critical of government. But I will tell you this, I'm not critical of city government because this is where people can touch us. We can touch people and we can make a difference in people's lives, and that's what you all do every day. And so I'm so grateful for you. And I know that I'm speaking for my colleagues when I say that we're all grateful for the work you do. So thank you.
Well, welcome, everyone. I'm glad to see there's lots of families here to help us recognize these extraordinary employees. So we're going to get started, and we're going to start with the Airports Department. And the employee nominated is Jim Larkin. Can you please come up? So what I'm reading up here today is information submitted by the employee's coworkers. And so I'll get started with that. Jim was the department's savior during the airport's great flood on April 13th. Even as the water was rising, he coordinated the immediate removal of office equipment, furnishings, and critical work product out of harm's way. And by 5:30 that day, when the rain stopped, the emergency response was also completed. Jim's take-charge attitude enabled airport's admin staff to continue operating with minimal disruption and allowed the restoration company to take all the necessary action to prevent the formation of mold. And thanks to a large part to Jim's efforts, airport's admin is able to continue operating during the prolonged period of reconstruction. So congratulations, Jim. So moving on to the City Attorney's Office. Now, this person does not know that they're nominated, so this is a huge surprise for them. So with that being said, can Katie Dorr please join us? Katie Dorr is the City Attorney's Office Employee of the Quarter. Katie started in 2007 and has progressed from a beginning deputy to the chief assistant of the transaction unit, leading nine lawyers and five support staff. She is always positive and has a can-do attitude and has a unique ability to prepare resolutions for councilmembers in five minutes and ordinances in 10 minutes, which she frequently is called upon to do. She is a respected leader, 100% reliable, and always fun to work with. The office thanks you for all you do. Congratulations. Moving to the Council, Manager, Mayor, and City Clerk's Department, the nomination is Annie Rennie. Annie has a positive attitude, respectful of institutional policies, and helpful to her coworkers. She is not only dependent, but accessible, prompt and willing. Annie is always coming up with ways to train and increase the knowledge for council staff with programs such as Public Stuff and Fresco. Annie is a valuable asset to the Mayor's Office. Congratulations, Annie. Next is the DARM Department, and we'd like to start off with David Sabalos.
And I think David is sick today.
Oh, David is sick today, but I'll go ahead and tell you a little bit about him. He's been with the City of Fresno for over 15 years and is currently a senior community revitalization specialist. David is presently assigned to the City Manager's asset team, where he works closely with the City Attorney's Office to ensure multifamily property owners earn compliance with the safe housing ordinances. He's been a vital... Excuse me, he has been vital in amending and updating code section used in notice and orders. David was the lead inspector on the Somerset apartment case, which resulted in 213 notices being issued and over 200 units being completely renovated. So congratulations to David. Next is Joyce Whitmore. Is Joyce here? All right, here she comes. Joyce is very professional and does her job well. She is a pleasure to work with. Joyce has a positive outlook and attitude, which is very refreshing. She is a diligent, hard worker with a smile to share for everyone. Joyce takes her duties, takes on her duties with great pride and works diligently to perform well. Her loyalty is beyond measure, serving 45 years in DARM. With her dedication to excellence, Joyce is a valuable asset. Next is our Fire Department. Our first nominee is not present today, but I'll tell you a little bit about him. His name is Nathan Dansby. He's an engineer and he began with the department as a firefighter trainee in February 2005. In May of 2012, Nathan was promoted to the position of firefighter specialist. Nathan consistently demonstrates a strong ethical and professional work ethic. Among Nathan's most recent successes is bringing to an account an arson suspect who believed to have willingly and maliciously caused a commercial business known as Livingstone's Restaurant and Pub to burn. Nathan was the lead investigator in this difficult investigation that required countless hours of hard investigation. He uses investigative interpersonal skills to work with the task force team to establish more than sufficient probable cause to secure a warrant, arrest warrant, and bring the suspect to accountability for his actions. So thank Nathan for his hard work. Next, we have from the Fire Department, Hector Vasquez. Hector began with the Fresno Fire Department as a firefighter trainee in February 2007. In June of that year, Hector became the department's Explorer Program Post Advisor and Assistant Coordinator. In January 2016, Hector became the department's Public Information Officer. Hector has proven that he is committed to serving the public and consistently provides professional service. His exceptional work in both emergency and non-emergency situations is a reflection of his character and integrity. He is the driving force of the annual Fire Explorer Academy and the Fire Chiefs' contact with the media, the social guru, all around, and an ambassador of the department. We thank you, Hector, for your service. Congratulations. Also in the Fire Department is Mark Brunel. Come on down. Mark has served the Fresno Fire Department for 10 years. He is professional on the scene and completes his assignments efficiently, superseding the expectations of his supervisors. Over the past two years, Mark has taken the lead on several projects at Station 9 to improve its appearance, enhance safety, and promote, provide a more pleasant work environment. Mark usually initiates all floor maintenance. He was instrumental in putting Truck 9 in service by committing countless hours preparing, marking, sanding, painting, and installing the equipment on the new truck. Mark can be counted on by the community, the department, and to provide high levels of service. Thank you, Mark, and congratulations. Next is the Finance Department. And being recognized is Lily Vamuelis. Lily is one of the first points of contact for new finance employees. She makes our employees feel welcome and always greets them with a smile. Whether Lily has a question from one of her coworkers, employees from other departments, or a walking customer, she always does her best to get their questions answered. Lily is always available to help anyone who needs it. She knows her job well and is willing to share knowledge and ideas with other. Lily is fast and efficient and knows what it takes to make a great team. So thank you, Lily, and congratulations. Next is the Information Services Department. And being recognized is Jonathan Recun. Jonathan was assigned numerous large projects, particularly... marking, sanding, painting, and installing the equipment on the new truck. Mark can be counted on by the community, the department, and to provide high levels of service. Thank you, Mark, and congratulations. Next is the finance department. And being recognized is Lily Vamuelis. Lily is one of the first points of contact for new finance employees. She makes our employees feel welcome and always greets them with a smile. Whether Lily has a question from one of her coworkers, employees from other departments, or a walking customer, she always does her best to get their questions answered. Lily is always available to help anyone who needs it. She knows her job well and is willing to share knowledge and ideas with others. Lily is fast and efficient and knows what it takes to make a great team. So thank you, Lily, and congratulations. Next is the information services department. And being recognized is Jonathan Recun. Jonathan was assigned numerous large projects, particularly in DARM and as well as ISD. DARM's offices on the third floor were being reconfigured to meet ADA standards, which involved moving all the computers, monitors, phones, and copiers. Shortly after this project was completed, the entire third floor was scheduled to receive new carpet. And again, Jonathan took the lead and coordinated the various stages of moving all the equipment in and out of the cubicles and offices. This project took months to complete and went smoothly, thanks to the outstanding customer service and professionalism of Jonathan. Because of his willingness to tackle any assignment given to him, ISD is honoring Jonathan as its Employee of the Quarter. Next up is the parks department. And being recognized is Alma Rosales. Alma is a recreation specialist with the Neighborhood Parks Program, who helps to enrich the lives of our city's youth through her hard work, dedication, and passion for her profession. She coordinates recreation programs at two neighborhood parks that include golf and tennis instruction, T-ball leagues, character development lessons, cultural enrichment activities, special events, trips, and numerous other social recreation activities. Alma has provided administrative assistance and leadership for staff hiring, orientation and training, activity training, program development and implementation. She consistently surpasses her job performance expectations. Alma is an emerging professional who is fully deserving of being recognized as Employee of the Month, excuse me, Employee of the Quarter. Also in parks is Evelyn Yenzipata. Evelyn is a temporary recreation specialist for the Parks Aquatics Program. She is responsible for the implementation of new methods of staff development and service training, and enhanced approaches to marketing and recruitment strategies. Evelyn is directly responsible for the highly successful year-round junior guard program, where she recruits, mentors, and trains non-traditional lifeguard candidates, many from disadvantaged backgrounds, to become future members of the Parks Aquatics Team. Evelyn has been assigned a lead role in the development and implementation of the Summer Swim Lesson Program at Central High and Fresno Unified High Schools. She is one of the friendliest people you'll ever meet, and she always arrives with a smile on her face and a happy greeting for her coworkers. Evelyn is respected among her peers, supervisors, and managers. The Parks Department congratulates Evelyn on being named Employee of the Quarter. Gotta love parks, I tell you. Next is the personnel department. And we like... They are recognizing Gail Miller. Gail has proven to be a team player who comes to work every day with a friendly, positive attitude that is appreciated by her coworkers as well as those we serve. Gail has quickly adapted to the fast-paced environment in the Personnel Department. She readily supports her coworkers and often volunteers to lend a hand. She takes the initiative to ask questions and read up on certain subjects in order to expand her knowledge. Whether answering the phone, or assisting the front counter, or helping employees navigate through the rules and procedures of the Family Medical Leave Act, Gail routinely goes above and beyond to assist. The Personnel Department is thrilled to have Gail as a member of their team and congratulate her on becoming Employee of the Quarter. Moving on to the police department. First being recognized is Brian Anala. Is Brian here? Oh, there he comes, all right. Officer Brian Anala joined the homeless task force in January of 2017. He came to the unit with enthusiasm and over a decade of experience in working directly with the homeless of downtown Fresno. After quickly, after being quickly brought up to speed on the team's mission, he took a leadership role in helping to identify and work not only the downtown and Chinatown areas where the city's homeless frequent, but also the northwest district, which is his assigned area. His personal knowledge of and relationships he has with many of the homeless has made his addition to the team invaluable. He can and regularly does diffuse situations that would otherwise end up in conflict or force. Officer Anala's work ethic is surpassed only by his eagerness to help support and be part of the solution in whatever problem he encounters. Brian is a valuable asset to the Fresno Police Department and the city of Fresno. Next is Bart Ledbetter of the Police Department. Detective Ledbetter has been an officer with the Fresno Police Department for 23 years. In the last eight years, Bart has worked in the street violence section investigating felonies, felony assaults, homicides, suspicious death, and officer-involved shootings. While working cold homicide cases, Bart reviewed over 500 murder investigations dating back to the 1950s. He submitted over 100 of these cases for further DNA testing. Bart has also been asked by his supervisor to be a training officer of new detectives assigned to the homicide unit. Bart deserves this recognition due to him continually proving himself on a daily basis to be an asset to the Fresno Police Department. Bart's hard work ethic and dedications to the victims of Fresno make him a valuable member of the Fresno Police Department. And next in the Police Department is Brian Heck. Officer Heck has been with the Fresno Police Department for over 21 years. During his career, Officer Heck has served in a variety of assignments to include patrol, violent crime suppression unit, detective, and Street Violence Bureau Tactical Team. For the last two years, Officer Heck has been assigned to the department's Regional Training Center, where he served as one of the lead driving instructors and was instrumental in the creation of the, of an emergency vehicle operation course for instructors to take back to their departments and train their officers. Recently, Officer Heck transitioned to the role of our department's Lead Range Master and also earned a position on the SWAT team. Brian's experience, work ethic, and passion for teaching has made him a valuable asset to the Training Unit and the Fresno Police Department. And last for the Police Department, but not least, is Haywood Irving. Detective, Detective Hayward, Haywood, I'm sorry, has been employed by the Fresno Police Department since 1997. During the course of his career, he has worked a variety of assignments, including District Crime Suppression Team. He is currently assigned to the Northwest Investigation Unit. Detective Irving worked for over two years on everything from negotiating with the DA to developing the format of the online program, Cop Logic, and creating training programs for loss prevention in officers. The Merchant Petty Theft Program was implemented citywide in March of 2017 and has already resulted in 45% reduction in calls for service for petty theft suspects in custody. Due to Detective Irving's dedication and diligence, the Fresno Police Department is the first agency in Fresno County to have this type of program in place. And we're gonna move on to the Public Utilities Department. And here comes Tommy. The first person to be recognized is Albert Hinoza. Think he's missing today. Probably working, yeah. Let me tell you a little bit about Albert. As one of the Solid Waste Management Division's heavy equipment operator, Albert has shown that he truly understands the driving force behind the division. Albert's coworkers describe him as someone who is approachable, always willing to help, knowledgeable, dependable, and most importantly, provides great customer service. It was noted by coworkers that Albert is deserving of this recognition due to his positive attitude and willing to go above and beyond expectation. Albert conducts himself in a way that is professional, safety-conscious, and very positive, making him a great person to work with. So congratulations to Albert. Next is Lena Lim. Lena is always willing to step up and help out whenever she can. She is a great example of an exemplary employee, always looking for what needs to be sent to the field crew or when a customer needs to be placed on cash-only status. Lena dispatches service calls, helps with reports, talks to customers, takes phone calls, and does all this and more with a positive attitude and a pleasing disposition. We in the Collections Division love working with Lena because of her great attitude and winning personality. Next up is two people from the Public Utilities Department. Unfortunately, one is not here, so Chris Chadwick and Kevin Herman. Kevin's not in today. Chris and Kevin recently went above and beyond their normal duties when they were assigned the task of modifying the existing discharge plumbing for the plant's Drain Station Number One at wastewater treatment facility. In 90-degree-plus weather, they welded and fabricated 40-feet sections of flamed pipes throughout the wastewater treatment facility. After several changes in design and routing, the final assemblies were installed. This piping system has turned over to the plant operations staff to pilot test. The division is fortunate to have such talented, conscientious, and thorough employees that are working to step up and take on a challenge. Congratulations, Chris and Kevin. Gonna move on to the Public Works Department. He's not here today. Okay. No. Yeah, they, yeah. He is? Steve, would you please come up? Steve Fratato. Where? I don't... Oh, okay. They have the one... Okay, yeah, gotcha. Gotcha. I got it. Steve is a dedicated employee who works closely with customers, contractors, and other city departments. He is the point person on Highway 99 realignment project, as well as two water main replacement projects. Steve's dedication, experience, leadership, attitude, and demeanor excel him as a premier candidate for Employee of the Quarter. Steve, thank you for all you do for the city and our division. Okay, now moving to Public Works. And we're gonna begin with Jeff Rudlich of the Public Works Department. Jeff is one of the guys that paints the curbs and traffic markings, as well as maintains the traffic signs, stop signs, and speed limit signs throughout Fresno. He has a great work ethic and takes pride in his work. One of the big highlights in his personal investment of his own time to help other employees get the commercial driver's license. Jeff is a natural coach and teacher, and he has helped several other employees study and successfully obtain their commercial driver's license. Jeff does this in an effort to help others, and his kindness is very much appreciated. All of the street's leadership team really enjoy working with him, and we're excited to see Jeff be recognized as the street maintenance Employee of the Quarter. Next is Debbie Fernandez. Debbie is an incredible resource in Landscap Maintenance Division, and one who represents the city of Fresno with pride and professionalism. Debbie's work often goes unnoticed because most employees don't realize how many hours of thought and effort she puts into her job on a daily basis. While working on payroll for over 115 employees, she also finds times to assist with accounts payable and is always willing to assist whenever and wherever the work is needed. She continually goes above and beyond, does it with a smile on her face. Reliability and dependability are never a question. Her work is accurate and always to the highest quality. Debbie can, Debbie and her can-do attitude create a great environment in the division, and we appreciate all her hard work and dedication. Next is Debbie Bernard. Debbie is a great project manager with the Facilities Management Division of Public Works. At any given time, Debbie manages 20 to 30 projects for other city departments. Some of her recent projects include CAD Park, the generator replacement at Garage Aid, and the renovation of Fire Station 20. As anyone who has worked with her knows, Debbie is excellent at her job and provides top-notch service. She is a joy to work with, and we appreciate her very much. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Department of Transportation, and we're gonna start with Lenora Ayella. I'm sorry. We still have one more for Public Works, and that is Lenora Ayella. Lenora does an excellent job administering the Development Impact Fee Program. Her attention to detail and willingness to learn has helped many of her coworkers with their tasks. When additional duties have been assigned, she makes sure that her work is prioritized and done correctly. She participates in many training events that are offered by the city and helps out other departments with Spanish translation. Her customer service skills are great, and she works well with other city employees. Lenora is an outstanding employee for the Public Works Department, so congratulations. So next is Transportation Department, and we're gonna begin with Gabrielle Acosta. Is Gabrielle here? Gabrielle was promoted from a bus driver to a Supervisor 1 in August 2017. He excelled in the training program and came in on his days off, making sure he understood every aspect of supervision. Gabe is an exceptional employee assisting with the implementation of extended night service. His work assignment cost him to work late nights in the radio room and assist with field operations. It did not take long for drivers and support staff to notice how Gabe was able to handle the radio from the field. He continues to answer calls, check on drivers and fellow supervisors, while at the same time assists fax police officers. Thank you, Gabe, for your excellent skills at multitasking. Next is Felipe Martinez. Felipe Martinez has worked for the city for 10 years. He has a wide range of abilities and is such a pleasure to work with. He has moved to various areas as a welcome help. Last month, when he heard the Upfit Shop needed additional help assembling police cars, he stepped up and volunteered. Felipe has always had a great attitude and wants to help others. When you need something done quickly, turn him loose and get out of his way. Okay, and the next person is Salvador Ramirez. Salvador was the top candidate for the storekeeper position over two years ago and was the clear choice from the start. During Sal's probationary period, he was documented, he documented over 25 departmental procedures, learned them, and will use them to train future employees in the parts session. Fax maintenance is a 24-hour operation, and Sal works many, any shift he is requested to work with a hard-working, top-service attitude. His abilities resulted in respect and confidence from his coworkers, vendors, and technicians. The Fax Maintenance Division is proud to select Salvador. The Fax Maintenance Division is proud to select Salvador Ramirez for Employee of the Quarter, and as supervisor, would like to thank him for his work and assure him that his work is appreciated. Well, that is our program for today, so I'd like to thank all of those people who were recognized and thank them for doing such a great job. We really appreciate you. And out in the foyer, we have refreshments if you'd like some, so please help yourself. You want to turn that off or leave it on?
All right. Okay, let's go ahead and move on because Member Capriolio is going to be calling in in about half an hour. So we've approved the minutes. We have council member reports and comments, and a couple people punched up for that. Member Brandow? All right. What? We didn't approve minutes? Yeah, we approved minutes.
No, I don't think.
You did? Yeah, we did.
There was one other thing you said we were going to do. We didn't.
Okay. Well, then, let's go ahead and approve the minutes. We have a lot of minutes to approve. Does anybody have any? We did, didn't we? We did. See, I have a very bad memory, but we'll just go ahead and let the previous vote stand on that one. It's time for council member reports and comments. Member Brandow, you're punched up.
We're doing council.
Council member reports.
Well, really, I thought I was going to be given a chance to say this while we had all of our employees here, but I would really like to congratulate Wilma on her new job, and today's her first day on the job. And Wilma and I had a great little lunch meeting yesterday. We had a turkey sandwich and talked about some issues facing the city of Fresno, and I appreciate she shared with me how open she is to working with all of us, and I really appreciate that, and I wouldn't expect anything less from Wilma after knowing her these years. And also to recognize Scott Mosier as Assistant City Manager.
Yay!
And Scott, you know how much I've relied on you in the Public Works Department, and I think that you guys are going to be great sitting down at that end of the dais and helping council work through the issues.
Great. May I for a second?
Please.
Okay. Thank you so much, Councilmember Bredifell. I really enjoyed lunch and our turkey. Oh, it's not on?
Just move it closer.
Just talk a little closer. Okay, so I thank you again for inviting me out to Riverside yesterday for lunch. I really appreciate how welcoming and supportive you've all have been during this transition for our office. Our team is looking forward to working with all of you in a very collaborative fashion, just like our mayor, and so I'm really excited to see how much we can get done together as a team to advance the city. So thank you again.
And if I may just add to that, I've loved the spirit of collaboration with the former hat, or hat actually that I'm still wearing as Public Works Director, to have worked with all of you individually in your offices, and just look forward to continuing that same spirit of partnership and moving the city forward. So it's a pleasure to serve with you.
Member Bredifell?
Yeah, I'd like to recognize Ron Stademeyer in Wastewater. He worked in our district with a number of residents with problems they were having. He was helpful, knowledgeable, and an excellent representative of the city of Fresno. And the second person would be Aaron Agiri's team. Agiri, in terms of tree trimming, he was amazing with our constituents as well and just a great reflection on the people who work in the city of Fresno. So thank you, and thank you to them and their staffs.
Member Baines?
Thanks, Council President. I wanted to let you know that I would not be at the newly scheduled August 3 meeting. I'm in complete objection to even having the meeting. I think that we don't need an additional meeting, so I'm not going to be there. I'll be on a scheduled vacation, just so you know.
Thank you.
And I need one. You see who I work with up here?
Is that an attack on me?
Well, you know, I'm surprised that you're adding meetings to the calendar.
Well, actually, we're canceling a meeting and adding a meeting, so technically, we're even-steven. We're not actually adding a meeting. It's still the same.
I feel like a meeting was added.
You should be there.
Well, I'm not going to be there, Council President, but in all seriousness, I did have a pre-scheduled vacation, and I won't be able to attend that meeting, and I completely understand why we had to reschedule it.
But we will miss you.
I'm sure I will be missed. And also, I wanted to give a welcome to our new city manager and assistant city manager. It is an absolute pleasure to be working with both of you. The fact that you all have been in this organization for as long as you have and have contributed as much as you have over your careers thus far, this is truly, in my opinion, a great opportunity to expand your horizon, so I look forward to working with you both.
Thank you, Member Baines. Member Soria, and then Member Chavez.
Thank you, Council President. I too want to extend my congratulations and welcome both Wilma and Scott to your guys' post. We're looking forward to continuing to work together with you guys on a variety of projects within District One and throughout the city of Fresno, so thank you. I also just wanted to extend my gratitude to Aaron Agiri, to Brian Russell. Over the last few weeks, we have been working with residents in the normal area in the Fresno High Neighborhood. I want to thank you guys for all the work that you guys have done with us to address the concerns and appease the neighbors there during the work that has been done to replace sidewalks and, in that process, removal and replacement of trees. So thank you guys for the work that you guys have done. I also want to thank the chief and the mayor on the Tower Police Satellite Station grand opening, which happened on June 28, and hoping that this is a new beginning for that neighborhood to begin to see additional presence of our police there. And so just excited. I know the community was very excited to be there and show support for this new satellite office. And then lastly, I just wanted to make a little announcement regarding what I'm doing within my district. I've launched a participatory budget process within District One where residents will have an opportunity to provide input as to how we spend our infrastructure dollars, what types of projects, and so we're starting that process. We're going to be creating a budget delegation committee, and we will have a series of meetings throughout the entire district to be able to get input on various projects and then have residents that live within District One from the ages 14 and up have an opportunity to actually vote on these projects. And hopefully, this process will conclude sometime late fall, but we have launched the process, and we'll be sharing the information on our website along with our social media and through our email list. Thank you.
All right. I too want to thank our new city manager and our new assistant city manager, and Brian and Aaron for the work they've been doing in our district. We've gotten a number of calls for constituents for the Butler and the bike lanes that we put in. A lot of folks are using that, and we really do appreciate that. And then also the project that we approved today. It's been years in the making over on Orange. That'll make the route safer for our kids to school and then give some folks on wheelchairs access to that health clinic that's on Orange and Butler. And Wilma, just want to say that I'm looking forward to working with you. One of my favorite cartoons as a kid was The Flintstones, and there's that scene where Fred yells "Wilma!", and she usually talks him off the list, so we're going to need you to do that a couple of times in the future. But welcome, and we're looking forward to working with you during the new Mayor Brand regime, so to speak. Thank you.
Concludes. No one else is punched up. That concludes council member reports and comments. We've already done contested consent calendar. We can now move to item 10 AM, number one, 3A.
Good morning, Council. Jim Shad with the Department of Transportation. This item is simply to buy, to ask for approval to buy six sweepers for our Street Maintenance Division, and they're just simply replacing the aged sweepers that they already have.
You. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address item 3A, purchase of street sweepers? Okay, seeing none, we'll return to council. Member Chavez?
Just a quick question. What percentage of our street sweepers are not CNG in our?
They're actually 100%.
So all of them are?
Yes.
Okay, great. That's all I really had a question on.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
All right, we have a motion to approve. I will go ahead and second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? All right, item carries unanimously, 6-0. Thanks, Jim. Item 3B, actions pertaining to Clovis Avenue overlay from Jensen to the Union Pacific Railroad. This is in District Five.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. My name is Randall Morrison, Assistant Director of Public Works Department. The item you have before you is for overlay of Clovis Avenue from Jensen Avenue to California Avenue alignment. The two items on this item is, staff recommends the adoption of finding of categorical exemption per staff's determination pursuant to Section 15301(c), Class 1 of SEQUEL Guidelines, and also to award a construction contract in the amount of $989,878 to Cal Valley Construction of Fresno, California. The project was advertised on April 6, 2017. We received seven sealed bid proposals ranging from $989,878 to $1,349,000. Cal Valley Construction is deemed the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. And with that, staff recommends approval of this item. I'll be available if you have any questions.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the council on this agenda item? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and return to council. This is in District Five.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second. The screen is clear. Is there any opposition? Item carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Thank you, staff. Item 3C was removed by staff, so we can move to item 4A. Let's go ahead and do item 4A. This is council boards and commissions. If anyone has anything to report from, please punch up now or forever hold your peace. Okay, since no one is punched up, then item 4A is in the books. Let's go to item 4B, approve the designation of myself as a voting delegate and Councilmember Capriolio and Vice President Soria as voting alternates for League of California Cities' Annual Business Meeting on Friday, September 15 at 12:30. Let's go ahead and go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this agenda item? Please come forward. Okay, we'll close public comment, return to council. I will make a motion to approve. We have a motion and a second. Are there any, is there any opposition? Okay, that item carries unanimously as well. Let's go ahead and move on to, we still have a few more minutes. Let's go ahead and do unscheduled communication. Are there any members of the public here who wish to address the council on any item that is not currently contained on the agenda? If so, please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we'll close unscheduled communication. City Attorney, do we have, can we do closed session 15 minutes?
We can at least do part of it.
All right, let's go ahead and do that.
In closed session, we have existing litigation to Lallion versus the city, also Stillwell versus the city, and then labor negotiations concerning FPOA basic, FPOA management, and CFMEA.
Okay, thank you. Member Brandow, and we're missing Member Baines. Want to make sure that everyone's here to hear the presentation first, so let me go see if I can locate these two.
This forward basically for a discussion, not an action item today on the illegal fireworks that obviously went on July 4. It was a very serious problem and seemed very different than prior years. Before we start, though, I just wanted to play this one video, which kind of highlights the problem, if we can.
The rocket's red glare appeared in the skies across Fresno so many times, emergency crews had to put other potentially life-threatening calls on hold. Fresno Police and Fire Resources were stretched thin for the July 4 holiday, and now there's a new warning about the penalties for illegal fireworks.
Action News reporter Brianna Ruffalo is live at Fresno Fire Department Headquarters with the call for the community to help extinguish the danger.
Firefighters say they saw a 65% increase in fire-related calls last night, and at times, call volumes were so high that 911 even went busy. Sounds of sirens were common to hear this July 4.
We got hit pretty hard last night.
Between Cal Fire, Fresno City, and Clovis City, firework and fire-related calls went up 65%. And Fresno City Fire says they saw a 70% increase in call volume.
The agencies responded to 325 calls this year, with 98 of those being vegetation fires, two vehicle fires, two apartment fires, three residential fires.
Firefighters say between 9:00 PM and 1:00 AM, fireworks were going off all over Fresno, creating havoc for their crews.
16 citations were issued last night, and several hundred pounds of illegal fireworks were confiscated.
The Fresno City Fire Marshal is dedicated to going after buyers and sellers.
Many of these folks are otherwise law-abiding, normal-go-to-work, 8 to 5, come home to family type folk, and see, July 4 season is an opportunity to greedily and selfishly obtain some extra cash.
Other calls in addition to those, but...
The Fresno Police Department says they also had a busy night, saying dispatched handled over 250 calls from people reporting illegal fireworks. They also say they saw an increase in gunshots fired compared to what they see on average.
Usually, we're seeing about three to five activations a day in our ShotSpotter areas for gunshots that we're detecting through that system. So that increased up to nine last night in that 24-hour 4th of July period.
The Fire Department is reminding everyone partaking in this dangerous and illegal activity that the fines are more than $1,000 if they catch you, and you could even be charged with a felony.
It is every citizen's right, and we enjoy the opportunity to celebrate this great country's independence, but we need to be considerate of all those around us.
Thank you. Listen, I want to be clear. We support, I support fireworks, but legal fireworks. We have safe and sane fireworks that are sanctioned by the state. We have many non-for-profits who make a lot of money from those. I support that. This is solely about... This is solely about the illegal fireworks that went off on July 4. And I think it was very different than prior years, and I think Chief Dyer is going to speak to that as well. So I think we need to do something. We need to really address this problem, because the Fire Department had to suspend medical services. That means if somebody had a heart attack, they weren't going to be able to respond because they're putting out grass fires. And it's just a matter of time before we have serious injury, or a apartment complex goes up in flames, or a home goes up in flames and somebody's in it. And we can ignore this. We know that there's always a 24-hour news cycle, and July 5 and July 6, people forget about this, but I think the council gets serious about trying to prevent something serious from happening in the future. And that's what this is really about. I put a proposal forward. I'm open to any suggestions. I'm open to any input from the council on how to best deal with this, that basically people who are engaged in illegal fireworks, first offense $5,000, second offense $25,000, third offense $50,000, and put liens on people's property if they can't afford it. We also have criminal violations that we really haven't utilized, where basically there's a misdemeanor and they can spend up to a year in jail. We have Blake Gunderson from the District Attorney's Office who will speak. I spoke with Lisa Smithcamp. If the city brings these cases forward, she will prosecute these cases. So this is for discussion to address this. There is also another issue, people obviously firing guns on July 4 or New Year's. I think Chief Dyer is going to speak to that as well, and it was alluded to in the video. And I propose a citation, fire a gun, first time offense $25,000, second time $50,000. I know it's significant. I know it's severe, but I think it's a serious problem. And I spoke to one of my colleagues who may speak to this, where he actually had a bullet go through his home from one of these quote-unquote celebrations. So with that in mind, this is for discussion. This is not an action item today, and I just would like to know what the council thinks. We have both chiefs, Chief Dyer, Chief Donnis, and Blake Gunderson from the District Attorney's Office, and I'd ask them to speak to it. And before they do, I want to thank our new city manager, Wilma, for meeting with me along with her staff, our city attorney. We met on Monday to discuss this. A number of positive ideas came up addressing this, such as having, instead of people calling 911 on the 4th of July, we actually have a fireworks number that people call. And there are a number of other suggestions related to PESAs, and I'll let them talk about it. So I don't know, do you want to speak first?
The city manager, you punched up, right?
Yeah, great. And before the discussion begins, I would like to thank you for meeting earlier this week to talk through this issue and possible solutions. I had an opportunity to talk with the mayor, and I'd like to kind of go over a list of things that the administration plans to do moving forward. So in discussion with the mayor, what we would like to do is implement a proactive and robust public service announcement campaign addressing illegal fireworks usage starting mid-June and running past July 4 next year. This PSA would run on both traditional and online social media. The campaign would also include inserts in utility bills, signage at safe and sane firework booths, robo-calls with the local school districts, and ads on digital billboards, just to name a few. We also plan on setting up a temporary illegal fireworks hotline, as the council member mentioned, and a temporary illegal fireworks service tab in the Fresno mobile app. This will be easy reporting for our citizens. With the work Chief Dyer, I will also work with Chief Dyer to enforce the current language in the municipal code, which includes an administrative fine of $1,000. With that said, you know, we do have, as the council member mentioned, Chief Dyer, Chief Donnis in the audience, and we also have Dennis Revelle in the audience, who is here representing TNT Fireworks. He can speak to the industry itself and his experience with other California communities facing the same issue. So thank you.
Chief Dyer?
So thank you, Councilmember Brettafield, for bringing this issue up, and city manager for already stating some of the things that we're going to be doing. This year was unique. I have to say that on a citywide basis. I don't recall us in our history seeing as many illegal fireworks in all parts of the city. And it wasn't unique to just Fresno. For whatever reason, this was a California issue. In fact, California Police Chief Association this week is doing research throughout the state in terms of what is being done to address this. I do believe it all starts at the borders, in the fact that we are seeing a lot of these illegal fireworks coming in from the state of Nevada. They have warehouses there that they sell fireworks. They look like mortar rounds. And so, working with our state partners to make sure that those inspection booths are being filled at the state border, I understand there's about 16 of them this year, but for whatever reason, I'm told there was only two of them that was filled. So there's probably a lot of stuff that came into California that shouldn't have. The other thing is awareness. We have to make sure that we are sending a strong message throughout our community that we are going to be enforcing illegal fireworks next year in our city. And it comes through the PSA, and we have to talk about the dangers involved in that as well. We also need to make sure that we have sufficient numbers of resources, officers out there in the field, to be able to enforce these illegal fireworks violations, so that we're not put in a position where we are choosing between going to a burglary in progress or a fireworks, illegal fireworks. Next year is going to be somewhat unique on July 4 for us because of our deployment schedules, and that we're going to have a sufficient, a significant number of officers that are out in the field. And I'm going to make that public commitment today, that we're going to have upwards of 25 to 30 police officers that will be dedicated to illegal fireworks in the city that night. They'll be working in both unmarked vehicles, plainclothes, as well as uniformed officers in marked cars. We'll also be utilizing, taking full advantage of our real-time crime center with video policing, looking throughout the city in terms of where those illegal fireworks are and dispatching our officers. The other thing is, we have to have a mechanism in place that we can fill these calls without inundating our dispatch center. This year, we had 276 fireworks calls that we went on July 4. That's a lot of incoming 911 calls to our center. So we will be, as part of our public service announcement, making the public aware of a hotline that can, citizens can be utilized outside of dispatch, that we will be fielding calls, not just a hotline, but also a social media awareness, so that people can utilize text, email, or a telephone to give us information on these things. So we're going to be committed. I can promise you that this coming year. I do believe, again, this was a unique year, and we have to send a message. In terms of the fine, I think what we need to do first and foremost is enforce the laws that we have on the books today, because we maybe haven't, we didn't do that this year. We have in years past. We didn't do it to the degree we should this year. And next year, it's our commitment that we're going to, and we're going to make a lot of enforcement. Now, we're going to have to do it very carefully, and I want to remind the council of this. Many of the people that we come across using illegal fireworks are good people, are professional people that are out there having, within their eyes, a good time with their family. So the interaction we have with those people has got to be, we have to make sure we're doing it in the right way. And we want to make sure, because we've seen in years past where officers have gone to an incident where there are illegal fireworks, and before long, our officers are having to call in 10 or 12 units, because now we have a big brawl in the middle of the street with our officers. So we have to be careful of that, too, because gang members, people that are using alcohol, all of those things happen, emotionally charge people, there's a potential for confrontation and negative publicity. So we're well aware of all those things, but we're committed to next year.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, sure.
So you mentioned about this year really not enforcing, or enforcing in the past, and now we're going to enforce next year, which is exactly right, and you've got a little bit better resources next year based on, you know, on that Wednesday.
Correct.
Now, the question for me, and I guess for this council, you know, I proposed increasing these fines. You said, let's kind of see where we go, but it's also, as you've said, this is a policy call by the council whether they want to increase the fines. One of the other aspects to this is DA Smithcamp saying, listen, if the city brings forward these cases, misdemeanor cases, she will prosecute them. I don't know that that's happened. Have we ever prosecuted through the DA's office on fireworks?
I'm not aware of that, but I will tell you that that should be part of the public service announcement, that these are not just administrative fines, but the potential for a criminal violation. And I think in those cases where they are flagrant, that we should pursue the criminal charges. We're also going to be doing that with gunshot detection through our ShotSpotter, going out the day after and locating where those gunshots are and filing criminal charges on those for those cases we can prove through negligent discharge of firearm. We have great partnership with the DA's office, and I am very, very confident that the cases we bring to them, they will make sure that they get prosecuted.
Okay, I appreciate that, and that will certainly be beneficial. And again, I'm open to the council.
Sure.
I want to hear what they have to say in terms of whether they want to increase fines. To me, when you do the PSA, if you actually announce that there are serious fines, administrative fines, there would be liens on people's property, obviously, that's a very strong message as well. I know the PESAs we've had, and you've done, and the Fire Chief has done, about the dangers of this. I don't know that that's going to get it done.
I would agree. I think we have to send two messages. There's the danger, and then there's the consequences.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. Chief Donnis?
Good morning, council. Just to follow up, echo Chief Dyer's comments, the metro chiefs, fire chiefs throughout the state, reached out to them. They've had similar responses this year with illegal fireworks being a challenge in their areas as well. We did see an increase of 65% in our grass fire activity this year, but overall, it was about an 18% increase in fire call and other calls this year. We do upstaff on the 4th of July between the hours of 6:00 and midnight typically, or into 1:00 in the morning. This year, we upstaff four additional apparatus, and that has been consistent throughout the years. We did miss four medical calls when we suspended medical calls. However, I want to note that we, even when we do suspend medical calls, we do not stop going to heart attacks or pin-ins like a vehicle accident. We do continue to run those calls as well. I support the city manager process, and we'll work with city manager's office and Chief Dyer on the PESAs and whatever proactive rollout we want to go forward with.
And could I ask Mr. Gunderson to come forward, please, from the District Attorney's Thank you for being here today, by the way, as well. Mr. Gunderson?
Councilmembers, good morning. Blake Gunderson, Assistant District Attorney. I'm here this morning to let the council and the people of Fresno know that my boss, Lisa Smithcamp, stands and would very happily stand with both Chief Dyer and Chief Donnis in regards to any kind of a public service announcement, to let the people of Fresno know that if you use illegal fireworks, or if you use safe and sane fireworks in a dangerous fashion, we can and we will prosecute. As a personal note, I would say that this July 4, in the last 35 years that I've been in Fresno, is the first time I felt like I was on the streets of Beirut.
It was a major problem, no question about it. And that's why, that's why I think the council has to decide if they want to do anything different to address the problem. Thank you. And city manager, do you have anything to add in terms of referrals to the district attorney, or is that solely through the police chief and the fire chief?
That would be through the police department.
Okay.
Now, if we, if there was an administrative citation written, but we believe it might be better handled through a criminal citation, we could discuss that, too.
Okay. Thank you to the two police chiefs and to the DA's office. Again, I just feel that the council really needs to take a stand, and I'm thankful to the city manager, her staff, the mayor, in terms of seriously addressing this, recognizing this was something different this year. It was very different, and it certainly sounded very different to me. So I'm curious to see what the council might feel on this.
At this time, we will go out to the public. Wait, it's just, is this, city attorney, is this, it's not an action item, so we don't go out to the public, correct?
It's not an action item, but it's in your discretion whether or not to invite the public to speak.
I have a couple of people who came special to talk, so why don't we go ahead and hear from the public? We'll start with James Bills. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and then you'll have, let's go ahead and do two minutes today. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's James Bills. I live at 1324 Simpson here in Fresno, California, obviously District 7. And I was born and raised here. I've lived in that house for 25 years. And in my experience, I've never seen anything like the last 4th of July. And it's been getting worse the last three years consecutively, actually. It just gets worse and worse and worse, especially near Manchester, for some reason. I'm not sure exactly what's going on over there. But you basically can't leave your house once it starts, because the people that are setting off these mortars and these rounds and these fireworks into the air, a lot of those things exploding with the force of shaking the foundation of your house, they actually line up across the street and light them off in succession where you can't even get by them with your car. I tried to get through to 911. I couldn't even get through this past 4th of July, and the attorney was saying that he thought it sounded like Beirut here in Fresno. I pretty much thought it was like Vietnam. But it's so out of control that there's really no words that describe it anymore. And we actually had fireworks, mortars going off, big mortars. They actually lined them up at Simpson, I mean, at Delmar and Shields, right there on Shields, across the street where you couldn't even drive past those fireworks, and they were shooting them right over Shields Avenue. I never saw one cop ever in the neighborhood. I never saw one cop last year in our neighborhood. So unless there's consequences to what these people are doing, they're going to keep doing it. And a $1,000 fine isn't going to stop them. That's all I got to say. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, James, absolutely. Okay, that's the only card I have on fireworks. Is there anyone else here, a member of the public who wishes, Dennis? Okay, I'm going to call you up special. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to address the city council on the topic of fireworks? Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment and return to council. Member Chavez, you're punched up first. Dennis, I'll call you.
All right, thank you, President Libby. I'll keep my comments short. I just had this conversation with Councilmember Brettafield. I'm 100% supportive of the discharging the firearm ordinance. I do have some concerns with regards to the actual fireworks, more specifically, the amount that the fines are, and I want to hear what my colleagues have to say as far as engaging interest on doing something. I think everybody agrees that we have a problem with fireworks, and in the conversations that I've had with some constituents, I mean, it's just been extremely rampant across our city. I wasn't here in town, but I did see some of the footage. I think it was the City of Los Angeles that panned out and saw a number of fireworks going through the sky. Fresno, the same. But I do have concerns with regards to the amount of the fines, and I know you put them in for the reason to shock and to let folks know that we're serious. I would be supportive if you were open to, especially for folks that can't afford that amount, if we included some language in there for, in lieu of that, some community service, picking up trash, graffiti cleanup, or something of that sort. But I did have a specific question for the gentleman from the District Attorney's Office. I hate to make you walk over. But my question really deals with, how do you prosecute these cases, right? Because I think by the time our officers respond, and specifically, if you could address the scenario where it would be a minor that purchases and discharges some of these fireworks, would we go after the parents, even though the parents were not directly involved? How would that work?
Parents can be liable for the actions of the minors, obviously. Without getting into specifics, it depends on the facts and circumstances and the evidence that is presented to us. My understanding of the law is that minors can only be in possession and use safe and sane fireworks if they're actually in the physical presence of their parents. Once they're over 16, that restriction is loosened.
Well, and that's my point, right? I mean, we have a number of minors and that don't have, or have very little parental supervision. We know that a large majority of them, because I see them on the street, they're the ones that launch those rockets that go off. We know those are illegal. And so my concern really deals with, how do we approach that? I mean, as a district attorney, would you receive that case and then make a determination if you would prosecute that, or would that be on recommendation of our police department?
Obviously, the case would first be investigated either by Fresno PD or Fresno Fire. Typically, as with any other case, they bring the... Typically, as with any other case, they bring the investigation that they've conducted to us. We review that evidence. Using our filing standards, we determine whether or not we can prove the case and we go forward. In the case of illegal fireworks, nobody can possess those except for the individuals who have the special license from the state fire marshals, typically the individuals who put on our pyrotechnics show, like for 4th of July and the like.
Sure. And then last question I had, and this is to Councilmember Bretafeld, so would we be limiting the amount of authorized firework vendors in the city? Or is that just?
No, the safe and sane, this has nothing to do with the safe and sane and people pulling permits to have those stands. This is all about pursuing people who are firing off illegal fireworks.
Yeah, and the reason I ask, because I had a number of calls, especially a lot of our church groups, this is their one fundraiser that they do a year, and that's a big part that supports their activities. And I know there's confusion over if that applied or not, but thank you for clarifying that. Those are all the questions I had, and just to see what comments my colleagues have.
I just want to, could I ask just a question? So, you would be willing to lower the fines for the illegal fireworks and was it accurate that you were saying for the people who are illegally, well, it's always illegal discharging these firearms, the guns, that you support the first time offense of 25 and the second offense of 50,000?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be supportive.
Okay, Dennis, come on up. And you're here as my guest speaker, so go ahead and make your presentation. Give us your name and title, and then you have the floor.
Thank you, council president, members of the council. Dennis Revell, President of Revell Communications, appearing on behalf of our client TNT Fireworks. It's been my honor and pleasure to represent TNT Fireworks since 1989 and probably I bear the distinction of being the individual, at least in the non-governmental sector, that has dealt with this subject on a local government as well as state government level, more so than anyone else. I appear here this morning to let you know that our client, as well as our firm, stand ready and willing to be a pro bono resource to this council, to your public safety agencies, and to the district attorney's office as you move forward to try and confront this illegal fireworks problem. You are not alone. I'll leave with the city clerk, copies of press coverage from major metropolitan cities throughout the state who don't allow state-approved fireworks, who have a worse problem than you do. The reason why we have a growing illegal fireworks problem, and Councilmember Bretafeld, you are correct, it is getting worse every year, but it is getting worse every year in virtually every community throughout the state. And the reason is, is that the state of California has the primary, if not the exclusive responsibility for preventing the influx of those illegal products into California. Unfortunately, they've abdicated that responsibility and local government has become the first line of defense and in most instances, the only line of defense against it. That's a burden that's unfair to you, it's a burden that's unfair to this community. But the realities are such that that's what we have, has led to this problem. I fully support the city manager, as well as Chiefs Donnis and Dyer on their comments. Your current fine structure ranks among the highest in the state. And the ability to levy that fine and enforce it both through your social host component in your current ordinance, as well as normal infractions, I think is relevant. I think Chief Dyer is correct that if you do in fact implement that and levy that, you will have an impact. But I would preface that by saying that your expectation levels need to be tempered by the fact that cities like Fresno need to let the state of California know that the state needs to do something. There's going to be an effort at the League of California Cities Convention in September, led by the league's fire chief legislative task force to try and bring about that collaborative process within local government, within the fireworks industry, and the state to try and have a consolidated process to attack that problem. So you understand why you have the volume that you do. Fireworks come in legally through California through three ports, Oakland, Los Angeles, and Long Beach. They leave those ports either by rail or by truck. When it leaves by rail, you know that that product, while it's illegal here in California, but legal in many other jurisdictions, it's going to get to that jurisdiction. The problem is that there are massive amounts of illegal fireworks that are being drop-shipped in California. In the last two years, there have been major seizures and arrests for drop shipments in Southern California that ranked in the 15 to 25 tons of illegal fireworks in each instance. So, we're dealing with significant amounts. There's one operation, commercial operation out of Nevada that brags that it does $5 million worth of business in Southern California alone each year. And it's become a year-round problem. So, you are correct, it is a problem, it is a growing problem. But I think collaboratively between city government, state government, the state-approved fireworks industry, the nonprofit organizations that rely on the sale of state-approved fireworks, together, we can all tackle this and we can have an impact and I'd encourage you to do that. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question, Mr. Revell? You were saying, though, about increasing the fines, you thought that that is something that should be a part, is that your opinion, that you think it should be a part of this? That, I mean, it obviously sends a very significant message?
Well, currently, your fines are $1,000. You are a charter city. General law cities can do up to $1,000. I'm, in those general law cities, I've been a strong advocate for them to levy up to the maximum amount. My experience has been that at $1,000, if in fact you're levying it on social hosts as well as perpetrators that are caught possessing or using it, you'll have the desired impact. And I'd suggest that, as Chief Dyer has commented, give it a chance.
Okay.
Implement it. And the only tweak I might suggest that you do for your own protection is to add a provision in your fine ordinance that allows you to also levy consequential costs so that you can, since the state is not appropriating any general funds for disposal, and one of the problems is that local governments, when they come upon perpetrator, aren't turning around and seizing the illegal fireworks because of the fear that they're gonna get stuck with the disposal responsibility and cost at $10 a pound to dispose of it, they're just, you know, warning and letting go. So, I think that if you tweak it by saying to recover response costs and disposal costs, and I can give city attorney language that's been added in multiple jurisdictions, that event, it will help maximize and underwrite the efforts of your public safety agencies, make sure that you're not bearing a cost that the state unfortunately is throwing upon you.
To dispose of it, to dispose of the materials. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Revell.
At that time, it concludes the workshop. Thank you, staff. Thank you, council. Thank you, Member Bretafeld. All right, let's move on to the 10 o'clock item, number two. This one is, Ms. Korea, I already called for public comment and you were not in chambers for public comment. Okay. We'll get you for your item. Thank you. Ms. Korea, you missed public comment for that item, and so we'll go ahead and, okay, we'll go ahead and get you next time. Thank you. Our next item is a 10 o'clock AM, number two. This is a hearing to consider the proposed annual assessment for the city of Fresno. Mrs. Korea, if, Mrs. Korea, I'm gonna have to ask you to step out if, okay. Thank you. You know what, if you, if, you're not gonna be allowed to speak during your scheduled time if you keep this up. Do the landscaping and lighting maintenance assessment, and then we're gonna go ahead and do the other item. Public Works.
Sir, good morning. Good morning, council president, members of the council. The Lighting and Landscape Maintenance Act of 1972 requires an annual hearing and levy assessments, which is upon you today. Today's hearing is to allow property owners?
I'm sorry, I apologize. Point of order, can we get Member Capriolio on the phone, because the next item is the one that he wishes to call in for? So at this time, we could reach out to him. Please continue, thank you.
So today's hearing is to allow all property owners included in the district an opportunity to give their public testimony regarding their assessments and to adopt, and for council to adopt the resolution approving the engineer's report and levying of the annual assessments. As required, this report was published in the Fresno Business Journal. At this time, we have not yet received any protest from any of the district members. So, total assessments being levied will be 703,000. These dollars provide the typical landscape maintenance duties throughout the year. So, I'm available to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Thank you. At this time, let's go out to the public. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the city council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Okay, seeing no one, we will close public comment, return to council. This is, no one, I don't have anyone punched up right now. We have a motion to accept staff's recommendation. I'll go ahead and second. Is there any opposition? Okay, seeing none, how many of us are left? One, two, three, four, to zero. All right, our next item is a 10-10 item, actions pertaining to, well, let's see, this is gonna be a while. And what time were you scheduled for, Mrs. Korea? All right, why don't we do our, well, do we have someone else here for scheduled communication, correct? Okay, and John is gonna need five minutes. So let's, unfortunately, we'll have to, we're gonna hold off on scheduled communication and hear this agenda item right now. Simply because of sheer numbers, we have more people here that are here to hear that item. So let's be respectful to their time and try and get them out as soon as possible. So let's go ahead and hear the 10-10 item, actions pertaining to the city of Fresno, annual action plan, and this is development and resource management.
Good morning, Kelly Fertato, the Assistant Director in DARM. And this morning, I am here before you related to the 2017-18 Annual Action Plan presentation. In addition to all of the information provided to you in your packet, including a supplemental packet, I've also got the PowerPoint presentation that was included in the packet available if the council chooses for me to go into that presentation. However, instead, I would like to utilize my time this morning and go into two different items. Those two items are going to be reviewing the information in the supplemental packet that the council received, and also talking about identifying priorities for the unallocated public facilities and improvements that were included in the annual action plan. On July 12th, the Housing and Community Development Commission recommended approval of the action plan with two revisions for the council to consider. This information was included in great detail in the supplemental packet to your staff report. But I would like to just comment that the public comments that have been received also detailed in, in detail in your supplemental package, the public comments, the majority of them were reflective of the HCDC two revisions. And I also anticipate that there will be individuals here to testify in the public hearing today on the same matters. The two revisions that the HCDC recommended for the council to consider included the increase of emergency solution grant funding to the Marjorie Mason Center. This was specifically in two categories. $40,000 would be applied to the rapid rehousing category and $60,000 to the emergency shelter category. The HCDC asked for the council to consider decreasing that proportional amount by the West Care applicant who was recommended for funding. So they are, to simplify, asking that the funds be taken from the West Care application applied towards the Marjorie Mason application. And I would just like to point out that the West Care application did include them as being the lead, but it also included another partner, which is Turning Point. I know that many of you are familiar with both of those agencies. The second revision that the HCDC asked the council to consider in approving and adopting the annual action plan related to Valley Caregiver Resource Center, and that was specifically to decrease the amount that was recommended for funding in the annual action plan to either the senior hot meals program or, and/or the after-school program, both operated by the City of Fresno Parks Department, in the amount of $141,000 to, again, to simplify, they're asking that the money be taken from the allocation for the parks programs for after schools and senior hot meals and applied to Valley Caregiver Resource Center. And these were for community development block grant funds in the highly competitive public service category. And I know that many of you have read this in your agenda packet, but just as a side note, that category is the most competitive and probably oversubscribed category of the $850,000 that was made available in our NOFA, over a million and a half dollars was requested for funding. So there were several great agencies requesting funding that the, that were not recommended for award. I want to let you know that staff took into, you know, when staff made its recommendations in the annual action plan, we took into account the budget process, we took into account the priorities outlined in the consolidated plan, we took into account the citizen participation process through a public needs hearing, and we even went so far as to remove some city services, such as the Neighborhood Revitalization Team activities, from this category so that we can make more funds available for these services. And to just offer you a comparative, last year's annual action plan provided $65,000 to community-based organizations, and the proposal before you today is a little under $230,000. So it's a difference in the city applying our funds towards nonprofits in that amount. The last item that I would like to comment on before you today is switching gears a bit, and it's speaking specifically about the unallocated funds of $715,000 that are in the proposed annual action plan, and those are in a different category for CDBG called public facilities and improvements. Some of the projects already included in the actual, in the action plan include projects such as streetlight improvements, sidewalks, curbs, things of that nature that were identified as high priorities in neighborhoods, again, in our public needs hearing. And the proposed activities do not currently involve any street paving or asphalt work. So I wanted to just make that point for you all. And during your consideration, after the public hearing comments coming up next, staff is requesting that the council provide back to staff the priorities for us to include in the allocation of that $715,000 that is specifically for public facilities and improvements in our neighborhoods. It is important to note that staff will be working with the city manager's office to finalize those priorities before any work would begin. So the council would be seeing those priorities again before any work were to begin. And we will be on our end determining eligibility and getting finalization related to the budget so that you can consider those priorities again before any work begins. So I would just like to wrap up my comments, and thank you for the time to go over both the information in the supplemental packet, as well as what staff is requesting related to the public facilities and improvements. And again, let you know that staff is recommending the council next to have the public hearing and obtain public comment, and then consider and adopt the 2017-18, so it's fiscal year 18, annual action plan, so that we are able to complete the process of turning it in. 18, Annual Action Plan so that we are able to complete the process of turning it in for the deadline that is in August, so it is rapidly approaching. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. I have...okay, I have one card. So at this time, we'll go out to the public and hear from folks. I have one card from Kim Contreras. We're going to do two minutes for this item, so please come forward. Give us name and address for the record, and then you'll have two minutes.
Good morning, council. My name is Kim Contreras. I live at 646 North Bond Street. This is my neighbor...
Veronica Solorsano.
And your hachas.
My direction is 3746 East Thomas.
And we're here representing the community members from the Leavenworth and Idago School Districts. We presented in the fall at the public needs meeting about lights and sidewalks, and so we're here today to thank you for approving that item and just continuing to keep that part of this proposal. The neighbors in our community, many of them walk, so lighting and sidewalks become an important piece of how we move around our community as well as keeping our kids safe as they go home from school activities. So just want to thank you for agreeing to approve those sidewalks, to see them finished. We have several areas where they're started but just not completed, and so we are grateful to be here today to represent them. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll also have two minutes.
Sean Jenkins, Senior Vice President for West Care California. The address is 1505 North Chestnut Avenue.
I'm sorry, is Member Capriolio present? Are you on the phone, Member Capriolio?
Yes, I am council president.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm sorry, please continue.
And I'd just like to comment on the HCDC's recommendation to lower the grant amount for West Care California. It's my understanding that the city has a bid and purchasing policy, and if that policy was followed and a review committee reviewed all the proposals and ranked them the way that they did, then just the matter of somebody saying, "We didn't get enough money," our actual proposal was reduced too. We asked for $450,000, and I think the recommendation is $360,000. We've been reduced year over year as well with ESG funds. There's not enough funds to go around, and I've testified before you guys before about housing dollars and that we need more resources for housing. And while I appreciate Marjorie Mason Center and I support what they do, I also have to support what the review committee ranked the proposals at, and this would be a large reduction in the emergency shelter piece. That would reduce Turning Point, who's a subcontractor through us, 60% of their grant for bridge housing by making this reduction. So I'd like you to consider keeping what the review committee proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward.
President of Police Chief, Terry Dyer. Yeah, I'm here really for two reasons. Number one, as a police chief, but secondly, I serve on the Marjorie Mason Center Board along with Sheriff Memes and District Attorney Smith Camp. And so the message is really from all of us in terms of the partnership. Domestic violence in our city is getting worse. There's no question, over 7,000 cases a year. What's important is we apprehend those individuals responsible for domestic violence quickly, within the first 72 hours, so that they do not victimize their loved one again. And then secondly, is to find housing for those individuals, getting the victim out of that environment. Marjorie Mason Center has done an incredible job for us for many, many years, continued to do so, and I will tell you that the loss of these funds for the Marjorie Mason Center is going to have a significant impact on reduced services and program cuts and have an incredible impact on the rapid rehousing, getting those people out of the environment for a period of time, allowing them to get back on their feet. So I would just ask council to reconsider the loss of these funds from Marjorie Mason Center is really going to have a detrimental effect and really impact the partnership that we have with them in the police department.
Thank you, chief. Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes.
Good morning, Jody Ketch aside, 1642 L Street. I am the Deputy Regional Director for Turning Point of Central California. My region is all things housing. I oversee Bridge Point, which is the emergency shelter component of the West Care application. The one that Sean referred to is this would be a 60% cut of what we have budgeted. Bridge Point, since its inception two years ago, has served 328 chronically homeless adults, with 124 of those being homeless veterans. 65% of all those that enter the program are housed permanently and maintain their housing. Of our entire population, over half of them are over 50 years old. HUD requires that our communities have a coordinated entry system, and Bridge Point has become an intricate part of that system. In addition to that, reducing the West Care application by the 40,000 for rapid rehousing really is just an exchange of money because West Care is currently doing that. So for Marjorie Mason Center to be able to continue to house those victims, they could simply refer them to West Care because they are doing that same rapid rehousing program. So I would urge you to please uphold what the Rating and Ranking Committee, which was an impartial committee, recommended, and keep the funding recommendations what they were. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. Give us name and address for the record. You'll also have two minutes.
Good morning, council and council president. My name is Michelle DeBudio, Executive Director for Valley Caregiver Resource Center, 3845 North Clark, Fresno. I would first like to thank the commission for their original recommendation and recent rerecommendation to award Valley Caregiver Resource Center, a nonprofit that's been advocating for our seniors and family caregivers for over 30 years. This critical funding for the Caregiver Emergency Intervention Program is detrimental to our community. Family caregivers are often overlooked, and the commission's decision to recognize their value is very courageous. This generous grant will go a long way to assist low-to-moderate income caregivers whose families are already struggling to make ends meet, for who of us can afford $5,000 to $15,000 a month for in-home care. Caregivers sometimes provide round-the-clock care to their family members without ever taking a walk outside, a trip to the store. The isolation is devastating. As a community, we can no longer ignore the growing issues that plague our seniors and the family caregivers. Our seniors have worked hard in their whole lives and paid taxes that benefited our city. Is that many times up? Okay, sorry. So at this time, I want you to know that the Caregiver Emergency Intervention Program fund goes 100% directly to services. We're going to help over 100 families that are low to middle income and provide 35,000 hours of respite. We provide the means for someone to come to the home to give the caregiver a break, for how can anyone provide excellent care when there's no opportunity for rest? We believe the city council will make the right decision and follow the commission's unanimous recommendation. And at this time, I'd like to introduce you to Linda, a family caregiver, who's going to give you her story. Please listen carefully, and maybe some of you can identify with what she said.
Maybe just strategically for you, I mean, you have 13 seconds left. Maybe she should just speak. When you're done, she can come up and she can get two minutes that way.
Thank you, council.
Okay, thank you. All right, please come forward. Give me your name and address for the record, and then you'll also have two minutes.
Good morning, council. My name is Linda Espinoza, and my address is 2170 Enrico Avenue, Far Ball, California. Once upon a time, I was living my dream. I was caring for my family. I was...I had a family. My family's been destroyed because my husband has ALS. And for many of you that don't know ALS, ALS is only two to five years. He's terminally ill, and he can do nothing. He can't speak, he can't go to the bathroom by himself, he can't feed himself, he can do nothing, nothing. He can see, he has sharp mind, but I do everything. I clean him, I do everything. My family and I have cared for him, and we have loved him, and we have done the best job that we can, but we need help. And for me, I was at a desperate, desperate point where I had to...I was breaking, I was broken, and Valley Caregivers Resource Center came in at a time that I absolutely needed them. And I...first, it was respite. They gave me a bit of respite, but after that, I decided that I wanted to do more. I wanted to take classes, I wanted to learn how to be a better caregiver, but more importantly, I wanted to be able to take care of myself so that I could care for my family, so that I wouldn't have to put my husband in a home. And, you know, that is...even getting care for him in my home would be...would drain us. So what I'm asking is that you would grant this because we desperately need it. Someone, one of you will be in my shoes, whether you're going to be sitting with my husband, where my husband is, or you're going to be caring for a loved one. So I just want you to please take into consideration what...how important this funding is for people like me and those that really want to keep their loved ones out of a nursing home.
Can finish your thought, please.
Okay. I actually would like to read a poem that I wrote out of desperation, so...and out of my desperation came this inspiration, and it's called "Shattered." It says, "My books are scattered, my life feels shattered. I'm so desperate for your peace. I cry out to you, oh Lord, God save me from myself. I'm not this broken piece of clay that seems to surround me every day. In your image is who I am. When I think like this, I know I can. Surround my thoughts, my hopes, my dreams. Release the voice within that screams. So much to say and much to do, Lord. Lord, I know now it's up to you. What will you do with this little girl whose dreams only you can see? Use her life and let her be the creation of your destiny. So all may know there is always hope when you're sliding down this slippery slope. Because God is greater than the eye can see, give it to him and let it be." This is a caregiver that was so desperate that something like this came out, I never knew I even could do this. So please, please consider how important this is for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address this agenda item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes as well. Thank you.
My name's Luciana Ventreska, Marjorie Mason Center, 1600 M Street. And you do have a public comment from our executive director, Nicole Linder, in your packet already. I am responsible for overseeing the emergency housing services for our domestic violence victims and also our rapid rehousing program. And it's always sad when we're pitted against each other when we have two agencies that are providing a very critical service to the community. The domestic violence victims, however, have very specific needs and services that they must have and are required to have legislatively as well, and the rapid rehousing services that we provide to them are very specific and unique to the services for a victim of domestic violence. And it includes some additional services with our case management and follow-up as well. And our emergency services with our Safe House are specifically legislated to work with this victim, work with victims, with specific trained counselors. Without these funds, we will have to reduce those, the number of counselors and the numbers that we can serve. So this would have a significant impact on us, and I just wanted to share that, that it's not replaceable simply by another program. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to the council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have two minutes.
Well, I want to address the domestic violence. In my sections, I'm Maria Estacaria, 3407 East Iowa. I'm a disabled senior citizen, and my neighbor, one of my neighbors, is getting beat up by her girlfriend, and he comes to me, and she says, "He's going to kill me, or I'm going to kill him." You know what? I tried to give advice, and they arrested him, then they let him go, and they did nothing. He's backed with her, he breaks up her windows, he breaks into her house and beats her up, and he's broken her nose, he's broken her arm, he's...I can't do nothing about it because I've given her advice, and the police arrested him, and then he's out. This is crazy. She tells me, "He's going to kill me." I said, "Well, I can't help you because you have to let him go and call the police." They don't do nothing. It's going rampant, men hitting women and breaking their nose, breaking their arms. That's crazy. I have to address that, except in our district.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the city council on this agenda item? Please come forward. Okay, thank you all. We'll close public comment, return to council. I have a number of council members punched up. Let's begin with Member Chavez, Member Brederfeld, and then where Member Brandow is punched up first, so we'll just do Member Chavez, and then whenever he comes back, you're next.
All right, my comments are specifically for the 715K that we had in there in this action plan. I know we've had numerous conversations about the Safe Raster School projects, and so I'd like to identify some of those projects around the schools and prioritize those on the list. I know Councilmember Baines has the Adams neighborhood. Councilmember Libby has the Idago neighborhood, and I know Councilmember Capriolio had a couple of sites. My district would be Lane Elementary and then Callawa area, so I want to flag those for staff. Scott, I know we had that conversation. We agreed to put them in the queue, and then I'd work with council to identify some of those projects in the future. That's all I had. Thank you.
Don't forget District 1.
Member-
Yes, we have some neighborhoods as well.
Member Brandow, and then Member Brederfeld.
All right, Kelly, I've got to ask a couple questions first here. Let me find my page. I want to go to page 37 in the action plan. And Kelly, how long is this plan good for?
This annual action plan will be for the one year, so it's the third action plan in a five-year consolidated plan. So this is the third one-year plan, and we will have two more after this.
Third one-year plan. And then there's a five...so there's a five-year plan, but it's broken down into annual action plans, right? Does the five-year plan have an impact on these annual action plans?
So the five-year consolidated plan is not specific-
So it's more of a roadmap?
...to how it's going to be implemented. It outlines priorities, and it's a bit of education on what the programs are, so it's a five-year-
And that's what we just passed a month-
Document. It was...that was passed in 2015. So then each year, we come back with an action plan on how we are now going to implement the funds awarded for each year. So the action plans are very specific, and that's what we're looking at today. Last month, I believe, was your question. What was before you was a substantial amendment, and that was simply a change to a prior year's action plan.
Okay. I've got a couple little things that I need cleared up, and then I have a...so, council colleagues, this is where I'm going to go. I've got a couple little things that I need in my own mind clear, and then I'm going to ask about the process a little bit.
You said 39?
37.
Okay, thank you.
The Cary Park, $400,000 expenditure at Cary Park, what is that about?
So the Cary Park project, as I understand it, and if somebody from the Parks Department is here and wants to add to this, I would welcome that conversation, but is a lighting project.
Lighting?
Correct.
Lighting, okay. And we met the other day, Kelly, and I appreciate that, but it's a big packet, and I ended up coming up with a couple more things that I felt like I needed to know what that is about. So that's just like several areas of...many areas of town that need additional lighting, right?
Correct.
So that's a lighting expenditure. What about the BMX Park, the item right underneath that?
So the BMX Park is something that has been identified through what a project that many of you are familiar with, the Southwest Specific Planning Process. And so it has not been determined, to the best of my knowledge, whenever I drafted this portion of the plan, the exact location, but through the process of the specific plan-
Kelly, I can help you with that-
Please, please.
-if you like, for Councilmember Brandow. So the community is working with our office to select a site. So we have narrowed it down to, I think, two parks, I think Wyatt-
So we have narrowed it down to, I think, two parks, Frank Wyatt and Mariella Brown Center. So the location of the BMX Park would be probably one of those two sites.
Okay.
I'm sorry. And Frank H. is in consideration as well. So it's going to be.
So there's three options?
Yeah, there'll be three options, but we're, we're trying to have kind of a, a process where a lot of folks that are really interested in this kind of weigh in, and we're going to work with the engineer and the architect to decide what's the best location.
So when it says that the "to be determined" is more about the location rather than the project itself?
Right.
It's going to happen?
It's going to happen, yeah.
Location to be, got it?
Right.
Okay. That makes more sense now. All right. So Kelly, I had a meeting with you and Jennifer, or I had a meeting, yeah, I had some conversations with you and Jennifer, and I thought I had some things clear in my mind, but now that we're in the heart of this, and I hear people speaking passionately about different options, then I wanted to get some clarification about how these choices are made. So could you real quickly remind me how, who makes the recommendations? I see HC, HC, what's their name?
C D C.
Yeah, HC D C. We've got, no, that's not a band. Councilman Capriolio's paying attention. He thinks it's a band. And we've got FM COC, the Fresno Madera Continuum. So could you please tell me how these decisions are made, the recommendations are made? Who makes the choices? Here's what I feel like we're doing, council, and it kind of makes me a little uncomfortable actually, is we have very limited dollars and a great need. So everybody that normally is working together is in a little way pitted against each other. Kind of sad. Who makes these recommendations and these choices?
So I'll speak towards the two that are before you today primarily. So the HC D C met, has been meeting, as this council body has since probably January of 2017 regarding this item before you today. So there's been several instances where, where before the commission, the HC D C. So the HC D C specifically towards CDBG, Community Development Block Grant Funds, they went through a scoring process. The meeting was held actually in this room one evening late into the night.
And who is HC D C? Who are the members? Where do they come from?
The Housing and Community Development Commission is a city body that is appointed by the mayor, and there are seven individuals representing the community sitting on that commission. It is a recommending body. It does not take action. So it is simply a recommending body. And that body, the HC D C, reviewed all of the applications. You'll recall, another binder that looked very similar to this came out a while back with every application in it. And so the HC D C reviewed those, and they sat for hours and scored, ranked, and made recommendations on funding. Those recommendations were, let me pause, and let me talk to the Marjorie Mason Center one. And those CDBG recommendations included what you heard today from the Valley Caregiver Resource Center. So that was CDBG. The Marjorie Mason Center, the process was a little bit different. That's why I wanted to pause for a moment before I went further. The ESG funds are very unique and very specific. The county has ESG funds also that they award, although they're not as much as ours in the city. It's a formula base again. And so the ESG process for making recommendations has been to have a different panel evaluate, a panel with some subject matter expertise. And so although our staff that works on those programs were part of the panel, we invited members of the Fresno Madera Continuum of Care, their executive committee, to also sit on that panel. However, we were not able to get more than two individuals because we wanted to avoid any potential conflicts of interest because some members had a connection with some of the applica, applications before us. So we had two members from the continuum's executive committee that did not have applications in front of us participate in that panel. Those recommendations were then presented to the HC D C. And the HC D C heard, had a public hearing, again, heard all of this comment, and they made the recommendations that I presented to you earlier in my comments, which were in alignment with some of the comments you heard here today. So that is the process for the recommendations and how they come before you. All of this information was confused a bit in this unique year in which the federal government delayed our allocation announcement so much. And so because the allocations were not announced at the time the staff presented all of these recommendations in the annual action plan, we had to consider then, in the, in the interim, then the city adopted a budget. And so we had to consider the budget process, the actual announcement of the allocation, excuse me, the priorities outlined in the consolidated plan. And so the red line version, that is the back half of the packet, is what staff's recommendation was. And again, staff's recommendation went back to the HC D C a second time, as it's coming to this body for a second time. And that is what the HC D C said, "We see this recommendation that staff has provided, and we would like you to make these two revisions." And that's what is up for the council to consider today.
Okay. First recommendations came from HC D C. Staff evaluated, sent it back, then they made a second set of recommendations. That's essentially what's in the packet today. Is the city of Fresno, is the administration, are you comfortable with the recommendations as presented? Or what are your thoughts?
I am. I am comfortable with the action plan as it was presented, but the decision, you know, the policy decision on what happens with the, the decision before you today, we are here to implement eligible.
Yeah. You're in a tough spot, just like, yeah. You're in the same tough spot we're in, yeah.
You said it very articulately. There's so much need in our community. There are so many great programs, and there just simply is not enough money that we have access to, to provide at all.
Okay. One of the, one of the applicants was Marjorie Mason Center. We heard from the chief a minute ago. Are they in the room? I can't remember.
Yes.
I, I'd like to speak with her then. Good morning. What was your name again?
Nicole.
Nicole Linder.
Right on, Nicole. Thank you. Nicole, so the Marjorie Mason Center, you do a very unique thing in the city of Fresno, which I think everybody appreciates. And do you have, so what are you asking us for today?
I'm asking for city council to approve the HC D C's recommendation, which would be, again, we applied in two different, most people, most of the people applied in two different buckets, which would be the CDBG funds and then the separate ESG recommendations. We have no, we have no issue with the, the original allocation with CDBG funds, even though we ranked number one. We didn't ask for the most amount. We asked for exactly what we needed. In the ESG funds, we asked to be able to grow our program, but the way the ranking system was, is whoever ranked first got all of the money they asked for regardless of how the numbers looked in the proposal. And so we were, we were originally recommended to get whatever was left over, minus, I believe, $10,000 for the Pavarillo House. Our request is that we, that the council approve the HC D C's follow-up recommendation, which is to bring us back to just our levels from last year so that we don't have to cut programs and services.
And what was the, what is the, the dollar amount difference between what's in the packet and what was HC D C recommended?
Um.
So how much short is your program?
I don't, I don't, I don't know the, huh? It's, it's, it's $100,000. That was the difference between our funding levels from last year and what the committee that ranked the scoring for the HC D C recommended for this year. So last year, we received $98,561 for rapid rehousing, and the proposal was to drop to 58, which doesn't really allow us to fund a position and provide the three months housing for families. And then our safe house or emergency shelter last year was funded at $134,539, and we're recommended to get 73.
Got it. Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Nicole.
Did I answer?
Yeah.
Thank you.
And then the folks from West Care, I was going to ask you guys another question or So, and West Care, you're also a real big player in the community. Do you, remind me, do you guys have other sources of funding? Could you talk to me about that a little bit?
We get some HUD funding for a different project. Not really any other sources of funding for this project.
In the, inside the ESG bucket, you mean, or?
No.
That's where you're, that's where you're, we're funding you through ESG, right?
Right. Right. Through this, that, that is the funding.
Okay.
So actually, the, even the $100,000 that we were getting for emergency shelter is a $25,000 reduction from last year for us.
Got it.
So it, it's been reduced, and, and while I appreciate the HC D C, they didn't review the proposals, the other group reviewed the proposals, they just reviewed the request of Marjorie Mason Center to adjust the funds.
Okay. Okay. So this is the bulk of your funding as well?
For that project, yes.
For that project. And do you have other funding for other projects then? Is that what you said?
Not, not, not other housing projects like this.
Not other housing projects?
No.
Okay. Okay. Hey, thank you. I appreciate it. And then the folks from Valley Caregivers, I'd like to ask you guys a question too. So it seems like over at the county, and I might be wrong on this, I might even actually could easily be looking at the wrong report, but do you guys also get funding from the county of Fresno?
No.
Okay. And do you guys get funding from any other sources other than what we're looking at today?
Yes, we get federal and state grants that we apply for, but we have never gotten any city or county funds.
Federal and state grants. And like, give me an example, what was the, maybe the last grant you got awarded?
For Fresno, we got the Fresno Caregiver Support Program grant for $162,000.
When was that?
Fresno Madera. I'm sorry.
When, when was that, that you got that grant?
We will get that for this next coming year.
And is that federal or is that state?
That is federal.
And then how about any state grants lately?
We get the, under the Department of Healthcare Services, we get a grant from them, and that is for nine counties. And we get that on an annual basis also.
And how much is that?
It just, it got reduced 72% in 2008, and right now it's at about 40%, and I think it's at $420,000.
The 420, is that divided, is that for all nine counties?
Yes.
Or is that your, okay.
And I think that, how much is the respite for Fresno? For DHCS?
Roughly about $60,000 that we're allocating for Fresno County. Our state and federal grant have been constant, excuse me, my, my name is Yi. But the need has not been constant. So over the years, caregiving has increased. If you look at Fresno County, Fresno City alone itself, you've got a population about a little bit over 500,000. Roughly about 83,000 of those are providing care. We're currently serving about a little bit over 300 clients. If you look at it, it's not a lot, but if you look at the monetary that we're saving from that, if all 300 of those clients decided to place a level into a skilled nursing facility tomorrow, that would cost the state roughly about a little bit over $2 million. If they decided to hire somebody privately, that doubles to $500 million. So what, what we're looking to serve with the $141,000 is 100 clients. If you take that 101,000 and you don't put it into any admin costs, that's about $1,400 per client. That equates to 70 hours for the whole year. 70 hours of break for the client that provides roughly 24 hours, 365 yearly.
Okay. Okay. I, I like that, I like that information. Thank you, thank you both very much. All right, Kelly, one more round for you here, that I've got to get clarified. Kelly, do we ever serve as co-applicants for some of these groups, like Valley Caregivers, when they make their grant application? Do we help with them?
Could you clarify the question?
You know, like, Valley Caregivers, they do, they ask for grants from the feds and the state. Do we help them with that? Do we sign on and talk about the need and?
I have, we have not supported their applications for other grants that I am aware of.
Is that support, would that support be helpful? Would the city of Fresno be helpful supporting your grants? Okay. I, you know, I'm going to, I'm going to.
Just a quick point of order, council colleagues. What we're going to do is I'm, I'm anticipating that we're going to see perhaps a number of motions this morning. So what I am going to do is do this, I'll run this similar to the way we do budget. So I will just write down the motions, and then we'll go through and vote on them when the screen is clear and when we're done. So I'm going to handle it that way.
Okay, then I've got, I've got your first one.
Okay. I, I knew you were going to do that.
Perfect.
Go ahead.
You know, and, and this is, and it's really, I hate to admit this, it's really, it's a lot of information, and this is what's happened for community members and the media would like to know that. So this has been a big, long process for a lot of people, and they've got a lot of skin in the game. And then it comes up on the council agenda, and then we get really hammered hard for about the last 48 hours, you know? And we have everybody that wants to make their pitch, and it's very difficult to get all of a sudden super cognizant of what that group does versus what that group, and it's really, it's really unfortunate. I'm going to make a motion, council president, that, that, by the way, I'm going to add this in a conversation that I had with Jennifer and Kelly. One of our only other options is to reduce the amount of money that we spend in our own parks and senior meals programming and shift it into some of the groups that you, that have spoken today. And then there's some people conceptually who would say, move the money from parks, get the money in this planning out of parks, let it go to these folks, and take money from the general fund and backstop parks. And really, I don't think that's something that I can support. You know, we just went through the whole budget process, and I don't want to spend general fund dollars. We, we almost really conquered that, that, that question, so that's not a thing.
And if I may interject, we do have park staff here to talk about the impact. Should we, you know, for, that, what, the impact that this would cause for senior hot meals or the after-school programs? If you need that.
Is that Kyle, or who's going to speak?
I have Christina and her staff here.
Oh, yeah. Whoever would like to come up, speak to that, Christina?
Christina, can you come up and?
Thank you. That's.
And I appreciate what you're saying about the general fund and the budget process that we just went through, so.
Right.
Yeah, thank you.
Good morning, council. Just to put it in illustration purposes, that dollar amount of roughly $140,000, the impact for our after-school program would be the closure of four sites. And the senior hot meal gets a little more difficult to illustrate because there are so many different pieces that come into play with the funding. There's three or four different funding sources that all feed into it. Part of it is the programmatic piece, part of it's the meal piece, but in just a general illustration, the $140,000 represents about 38 to 40% of the overall programming that we are able to provide.
And it would close four sites, Christina, or reduce?
Well, you could cut it any way you like, but the illustration would be that based on that dollar amount would be closing four sites for the after-school. And I would remind, as you know, that the CDBG funding is available for our disadvantaged communities, and that's where these programs are offered.
Right. You know, and I've got to ask this question from a little analysis thing that I've done recently. Are, are people taking advantage of those parks programming?
As far as numbers?
Yeah.
I would ask that the staff that oversees those, if they, if you want to get into that detail.
Well.
But yes.
You're telling me the people are taking advantage, because I've seen the reports from the other groups.
We have pretty robust attendance at our senior programming, and then the after-school programs vary by each site, but yes, they are utilized, and in our opinion, utilized well. And without those programs in those particular areas, they would not have programming or services.
You look like you want to jump up, Kyle. Okay. Okay. All right. What time?
It says over 6:00.
Yeah, over 6:00. Okay. All right. Thanks, Christina. Thanks, Wilma, for reminding me of that. I'm going to make a motion, council president, that, that is probably going to impact about $100,000 worth of, of change from the recommendation. And that would be to double the amount to the Pavarillo House from $10,000 to $20,000 and to take $90,000 into the Marjorie Mason's deficit. And I can't take it from, from parks and recreation programming, so I'm unfortunately going to say, let's take it from the West Care budget. Yeah.
Read it again, please. Double amount to the Pavarillo House from 10-
Well, the doubling part isn't important to go, but it is just a dub.
To go from 10,000, okay. So, increase amount of Pavarillo House from 10,000 to 20,000. You wanted to say and and put them both in the same motion?
They go within the same motion.
Okay, and?
And $90,000. Not the full amount that they're asking for, but $90,000 to the Marjorie Mason Center.
Okay. Is there a second, council? Okay, a second by Member Baines? Are you through?
I'm done.
Okay. We have Member Bretafeld, then Member Baines, then Member Soria. City manager, feel free to jump in if you have.
Nicole, I want to ask you a question. So, from last year, again, your recollection of what you were funded last year?
Last year, we were funded 98,561 for rapid rehousing, 134,539 for our emergency safe house, and 5,827 for our administrative services.
Okay, so it's 90 additionally that is proposed by Member Brandow that meets your needs?
I, I'm sorry, can you?
That extra 90,000 from, that Member Brandow's proposing in his motion meets your needs at the Marjorie Mason?
Yeah, it would be helpful to know that split. I, I don't, because we didn't see the applications, I don't know where Pavarillo House was asking for that, that additional 10,000. I don't know if it was for emergency services or rapid rehousing. Okay, yes.
Yeah, they're talking about taking it from West Care, correct? The one, is that from the 110?
Yeah, but there are, there are different buckets within the emergency services, but, but it sounds like, yes.
If, if I could clarify, I understood the motion to be for $100,000 total with 90,000 being taken from the West Care allocation and the additional $10,000 that would be for the Pavarillo House also to be taken from the West Care. And just to clarify what I just mentioned outside of the microphone, the West, the Pavarillo House allocation was within the category of emergency shelter. So, all of that $100,000, as I understand the motion to have included, would come from, I'm sorry. The 10, the extra 10,000 would come from that, that category.
So, there still would be nothing to rapid rehousing, is what you're saying?
No, no. So, in, the question that the Marjorie Mason Center is trying to understand is the specific split of 60 and 40,000. And so, her question is where will that $10,000 come from? And my answer to her is that that would come from the emergency shelter category.
Correct.
Which is information she needs to know to see if it will answer your question and be sufficient. So, thank you for letting me interrupt.
And that addresses-
The answer is yes.
Okay, great. That's what I needed to know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Are you finished, Member Bretafeld? Okay. Member Baines and then Member Soria?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, council president. Really quick, where's, was my West Care? Can, are we, I, I need a clarifying, I need a clarified answer here about, it's, it's, it's our understanding on this dais and we could be wrong, that you do get money from the county for ESG. Is that, are we wrong to assume that?
We get some, West Care gets some money from the county for-
ESG?
Community Coordinator ESG. It's for the FMCOC. It's a community position and also for the housing matcher, which we have stationed at the Housing Authority.
Okay, so-
But it's not for rapid rehousing or emergency shelter. It doesn't provide any housing.
So, is it, so it's-
It's ESG funds, but it doesn't provide any rapid rehousing or emergency shelter.
Okay, I, I think, I think when Councilmember Brandow was asking, he probably maybe didn't understand the specific nuance. Why don't you go ahead and tell us what the nuance between the ESG and rapid rehousing is? Because I think he was asking a question about this category and maybe you split it on, on a finer hair. So, we probably need to hear that.
Okay, well, through, through the county's process, when they did a piece on their ESG, they went to, one of the things that both the city and the county has to do is go through the Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care on their ranking and how they want to prioritize the funding. So, when they did that, they, the FMCOC talked about needing a community coordinator and a housing matcher for the entire FMCOC to operate the coordinated entry that we have for housing services. There was a recommendation to not go out to bid and it was recommended that West Care be the recipient of those funds. So, we are the corporation that holds the funds for two community positions. They're not solely West Care's positions, they're community positions. The housing matcher, what it does is works for all of the Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care. So, anybody that's going to, needs housing, they go through that housing matcher, they get matched to the right provider and that referral gets pushed over there. The community coordinator coordinates the outreach services, services that help at MapPoint to coordinate agencies going in there and out. And they also coordinate all of the agencies coordinated outreach. So, part of it's the hero team that comes out of the, the city's budget. And then part of it is all of the agencies for the Fresno-Madera Continuum of Care volunteer their time to go out and do outreach and that community coordinator coordinates all those activities.
Okay. So, it, okay, I get it. So, in, in a sense, you do get some other money for those services, not, just not directly for housing is what you were trying to say?
Correct.
Okay, okay, thank you. And I'm going to ask the chief to come up. Hey, chief, you, you talked a moment ago in your, in your public comments about just domestic violence being on the rise and what have you. And, and it's my understanding that we don't really have in the, in the city of Fresno any other real reliable providers for victims of domestic violence that really provide a suite of services. Can you kind of give us a little bit more insight on that?
Well, whenever there is a domestic violence case and we are making an effort to get that victim out of the home, the place that we go to, our go-to location is the Marjorie Mason Center. And in every case, and that's where our officers ultimately end up referring people to, transporting victims to. And they're the ones that we rely on to provide that emergency housing for them. And the rapid rehousing is important because it gives them that 90-day period or whatever to get reestablished so that they don't feel that they have to go back into that same environment that they were in when they were beaten. And so, they are a critical, critical function of what we do in law enforcement. In fact, we'd be very ineffective in what we do in domestic violence without them.
You know, and, and thank you, chief, I appreciate that. I, I asked you to come up and just kind of talk about that a little bit more, only because from my perspective, having been former law enforcement as well, I think what Marjorie Mason's done is really nuanced in Fresno.
Unique.
And, and we have a major problem with housing, you know, across the board with homeless folks and affordable housing across the board. But I think the Marjorie Mason Center provides such a really nuanced approach to our domestic violence victims and their coordination with you all, particularly from the letters from the sheriff and the district attorney and, and your testimony here today, really makes it so I don't want to cut that category much more dramatically than we already have in the future. So, that's the main reason I'm supportive of Councilmember Brandow's motion is because it really is very, very unique.
Yes.
Maybe, maybe some of the most specialized stuff that we have in the city around domestic violence. And I wanted to honor that, so thank you, chief, I appreciate that.
And, and not only that, the fact that we're dealing with individuals that, should they not be provided that housing, are being subjected to death.
Yeah. Well, thanks for putting the most finest point on it that could have been, could have been made today. So, I, I'll keep my, my comments relatively brief, council president, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the unallocated funds and, and I was, want to completely, wholeheartedly endorse the, the thoughts by my colleague, Councilmember Chavez. You know, council member, I'm very happy to see that one of your, you know, one of the areas around your schools is on the table for funding. Out of this is really, really important. I have a school like that in my district, Jane Adams. It doesn't have lights or sidewalks and it's elementary school. And it, and it's just my opinion that providing lights and sidewalks at, at those, at elementary school sites in particular should be high priorities. Particularly when a lot of our elementary school kids walk to school and walk to and from school in the, in the morning, in the evening, in the fall, when the fall happens and it gets dark earlier, dark earlier and, and light later. You know, we, we're talking about severe public safety issues. We have some of our students that, that may not have the most, the best mobility and may also need sidewalks to make sure that they're able to safely access their school site. So, as we, Kelly, and this is for you too and Jennifer, wherever Jennifer's at, oh, there you are, that as we are contemplating the, the unallocated funds and, you know, should those go to infrastructure projects, I'd like to make sure that we really are prioritizing those areas in the city where our elementary school kids are having a traverse and make sure that, you know, lighting inadequate sidewalk, you know, infrastructure is there for them to get there safely. So, supportive of your motion, Member, Member Brandow, and, and want to, also wanted to take a moment to follow up and support Councilmember Chavez's thoughts about making, making that a priority.
Soria?
Thank you, council president. Echo some of the remarks just made by my colleague, Councilmember Baines regarding the existing allocation for parks and infrastructure. I think that it's critical and so I'll be supportive of that. I do have a couple of questions from the, I think it starts on page 40, just so that we can have a conversation about how some of these monies were allocated, because I know that there were some changes. So, Kelly, for the lead abatement program, there was a significant reduction. And so, maybe could you speak to what, who, how did you guys make the determination of this significant decrease? I believe it was a decrease of 203,000. Is the need, you know, not as great? Why did we, you know, reduce it back to 60,000 and only three housing or three households would benefit from this?
Thank you. So, specifically regarding lead abatement program, I know that it's-
I'm sorry, point of order. Interrupt you for a second. Counsel, I don't know what the will of the council is in terms of taking a break for lunch if folks want to go to lunch and come back. Seems like the balance of the agenda is pretty light. I would be willing to go and have a lunch break and return, or I would be willing to, to work straight through. So, looking for some kind of consensus.
It's good then.
Council president?
Yes.
I would like to speak after Member Soria.
What'd he say?
I'd like to speak after Member Soria.
Yes, you're up next.
Thank you, sir.
Well, we, I guess we have to continue. How long can, wait, you, you cannot stay? You have a pre, pre-planned appointment. So, when do you have to leave? Now? How much longer do you think you're going to be, Member Soria?
I just started and my other colleagues had a number, the opportunity to address a number of questions, so.
Let's go ahead and take a lunch break and we'll be back at 1:30. Thank you. Let's go ahead and, let's go ahead and begin. Member Capriola is present by telephone. We're just waiting for, I mean, can we do this without Member Baines? Member Brandow? He was your second. I mean, do you want to move forward without him? We can wait.
Council president, I think they're right outside the door.
And folks, just want to remind that public comment is closed on this agenda item. If there's any late arrival.
That's, no comment.
Soria? You have the floor.
Thank you, council president. So, Kelly, I have a couple just questions I know that I had and I'll repeat. My, my first question was related to the lead abatement program. And just if you can explain kind of the change from the original amount that was proposed, so I think it was 263,000 to the existing amount.
So, the change is a reflective of the $263,000 original amount being included in the reprogramming that was approved back in June by the council. And the, the purpose of putting the majority of that activity in the reprogramming was so that the activity would see less of a delay in service, in implementing the service. So, we were able to turn that process into HUD a lot sooner and those funds are covered and that activity is covered under the reprogramming from a prior year.
Which we did in June. June. And so, we're still going to be servicing the same amount of folks?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. And then my next question was with the senior paint program. We added some additional funds.
Correct.
And were those the funds that were shifted out of the lead that were originally proposed as higher or?
So, there was not a one-for-one switch there. We heard in the public comments at the public needs hearing that both the city performed senior paint program was helpful as well as a nonprofit being able to build that kind of capacity. And so, we basically allocated some additional funds for both to operate at the same time and be complementary services.
Perfect. No, and I know that there is a number of us up here that are big supporters of the senior paint program, so I'm excited to see that there'd be additional work that can be done. Couple other questions just on, on that. How did you guys pick the nonprofit?
For the senior paint?
Mm-hmm.
That was part of a NOFO process. So, Habitat for Humanity was the only applicant that applied for that activity.
Okay. And then how were the applications being accepted? Are we going to be working directly with them? Because I know that in the past we've had a list. How, how is that process going to work out?
So, Habitat for Humanity as well as our staff that does the city performed work have agreed to work through the process and define that better. We are hoping for joint application processes and again, for it to be a very complementary program. We know that there will be some limitations as to how many projects that the nonprofit can take on that are properties built prior to 1978 when there is lead abatement issues. And so, the city would probably take a lead on a lot of those. So, we have to coordinate that and clearly we needed to- So we have to coordinate that, and clearly, we needed to ensure that the proposed activities were approved prior to developing the policies and procedures that go along with implementing that program. But we're intending to fully cooperate and offer a complementary program.
So if people apply through the city, we will be working with Habitat so that they can take some of those applications?
Right.
I just want to make sure that, you know, that we're not targeting different groups of people and that we do have more of a streamlined, and so that our office, you know, if someone comes to us, we know exactly, you know, how to ensure that they'll go through the process.
So our intention is to have on our website, as you all know, there's been some revisions to our website recently, and we want to have all of the applicant process, application processes on our website so that it is very clear and easy to follow. We will hopefully have a streamlined process because the funding is the same. I'm hopeful that our applications can look similar and that the end user really doesn't need to worry about who is performing the service, that it is that seamless to the person receiving the services.
Perfect. And then do you happen to have an idea if we have a waitlist on the senior paint program?
I do not know off of the top of my head, no. I know that we do have, if we do have a waitlist, I know that it is much smaller than it has been in years past. We've been doing a lot of great work this year, and we're really excited to come before this body again in a couple of months and report on our performance.
And with having the nonprofit, I guess, be a partner, we'll probably be able to accomplish more a lot faster.
Yes, that's certainly the idea.
Okay, perfect. And then, okay, so those are my questions for that, and I just wanted to make, I guess, some general comments regarding, you know, some of the funds that are being used, which I support in terms of the, you know, the maintenance and the investments going into a lot of parks. I, you know, was a little disappointed not to see much investment in District One, and I know that I shared that when we previously met. There are still some deferred maintenance that I'd like to see addressed with Quigley that have been outlined, and also in Lyons Park, we have some repaving of some parking lots that need to happen, and so I'm hoping that those are being noted so that as we're, you know, coming in this next funding cycle, that they are prioritized, because if we look at the last two years, the small number of parks that I have in District One haven't received as much as other areas from the city. So I'd really encourage you guys to hopefully prioritize District One in the next cycle. And then I just also wanted to just comment, I know that my council colleague made a motion to give additional dollars to Pavarello House. I will say that I'm a strong supporter of, you know, the work that they're doing. I actually, funny enough, I had a conversation earlier just mentioning that issue, and so I was glad that he was thinking along those same lines. I think that it's going to be helpful. While it's not a lot of money, I think that $10,000 doubling the funds will help them in the continued efforts that they're doing, and the great work that they're providing and services that they're providing here in the city of Fresno. So we'll be supportive. Also, want to thank the folks here from the Marjorie Mason Center for coming and speaking and requesting the additional funds. It's, you know, it's unfortunate that we have such limited funds. I would love to have a lot more so that we can, I guess, spread the wealth, because there are a ton of organizations within the city of Fresno that are doing very valuable work to address the diverse problems that we face here in the city of Fresno. So I'd be happy to support the motions that, or the motion that has been made to make some increases, and then also figure out, I think, as we move forward, how we can continue to build capacity and continue just to hopefully augment in some way some of these services that are being provided by, like Turning Point, you know, West Care and all the other nonprofit organizations that are out there. I guess it will be interesting to see what our current president proposes in terms of the funding for the next few years. So I hope that everyone out there in the audience and the residents continue to advocate that we receive our fair share of CDBG, that our existing administration doesn't cut those funds, because as we now see today, here we are, you know, struggling to figure out how we're going to allocate those funding. So I hope that as you guys are here today advocating to get funds, that you guys continue to advocate at the federal level so our current administration doesn't cut dollars that go to social programs like the ones that you guys provide. And so I just really highly encourage you guys, and then I encourage this body as well to ask our local Congress representatives, our administration, to encourage them to support additional funding rather than cut the funding, because then we're faced with situations like this. This year, we're receiving a good amount of money, but next year, we don't know, and so it may be less dollars that then we are trying to fight, you know, amongst each others to try to provide the critical services that we all provide. So I think this will be a great opportunity for us to continue to advocate that we receive additional dollars and that the social programs aren't defunded. Thank you.
Okay, the screen is clear. I just have a couple of remarks that I would like to share with folks. From time to time, a city council member will go on a rant that is high above his or her pay grade, and we really try, from time to time, it's very rare that I ever do that. And I just, I feel moved to do that this afternoon, just because of the situation before us that I think everyone in this room and everyone up here on this dais agrees is very sad. And when I look out, I see my, not just fellow Americans or fellow Californians, but I see my neighbors that are all doing good things. You're all doing extraordinary things in our community that the government just can't do. When we try to do things, we don't come anywhere near, close to doing them as well as you do, which is why you're here. I think it's very regrettable, and I lament the fact that people who operate in levels of power high above us, our Congress and our executive branch have reduced Americans to this, to writing a check to the city and then, you know, giving us a discretion of what we're going to do to spend the money, and then let our community members fight it out. I mean, nobody's fought, nobody's angry, nobody's violent, but I think people are heartbroken over the fact that some groups are going to get resources this year and others are not, and I think that's very sad. And so I wanted to kind of echo what my colleague Esmeralda Soria just mentioned, that I, it would be a good time to call your representatives in Washington, D.C., and call your, and call the White House. It doesn't matter who these people are, it doesn't matter if it's Mr. Obama or Mr. Trump, the fact of the matter is the American system is broken, and probably in an irreparable way. An American system that takes 43, more than $43 billion in our tax dollars that could go to taking care of people with ALS, that could go to taking care of victims of domestic violence, and they take this $43 million, excuse me, billion, $11 billion of that goes to military aid overseas. This is foreign aid that is extracted from all of us and shipped overseas. Foreign aid is money taken from poor people in rich countries and given to rich people in poor countries, and we're all the victims of that today. While our veterans suffer, while we have homeless people who suffer, while our brothers and sisters in our own country are suffering, this is what our federal government thinks of us, and this is the fruits of that, where we, resources are so scarce. But, you know, did you know that you paid for a million-dollar bombing run in Yemen today? Where's Yemen? Why are we bombing it? But that money, I think, should go to the Marjorie Mason Center, or it should go to the respite people. That's what I think. I think that it's just, it's regrettable that after 16 years, we're funding military operations in Afghanistan, and the people who are about to ship out to Afghanistan were infants at the time that the towers came down, and this is still going on, and we still suffer here. Each person in Afghanistan is a recipient of $148 of your money. Each person in South Africa gets $10 from you and me. Each person in Tanzania gets $9, and each Russian is a recipient of $3 of American money. And so, you know, we're going to go out of here and leave, and I'll go back to trying to do my city council thing, and you will go back into the community to do the great work that you do, but please don't forget that we are, we, what we're, our missions are, exist at the whim of a completely broken and terribly horribly troubled system in Washington, D.C. And so I don't think that that's, this is not a Republican or Democrat issue. I think it's an American issue, and so I think it's really regrettable what's happening, not just in our community, but communities around the country. While our cities deteriorate and decay, the money that our taxpayers pay is taken out of our neighborhoods and sent overseas. So with that, the screen is clear. I only have, oh, sorry. Voice from on high, it's your turn.
Well, thank you very much, Council President. I had a couple of questions, excuse me, regarding West Care. I wanted to follow up with Member Baines' question about the money from the county to West Care. We talked about the county receiving money, giving to the West Care in the case.
Can you repeat your question, Member Capriolo? Try to be more clear.
I want to follow up with Councilmember Baines' question of the amount of West Care received from the county in Fresno.
From the county? Does anyone know West Care's allocation from Fresno County?
This is Sean Jenkins, West Care. $140,000 for two positions and their mileage and everything else that neither one of them has anything to do, not one of those dollars goes to house anybody.
Did you hear that?
I did, thank you. My next question is, under the homeless services, it has West Care, Hopwa, H-O-P-W-A, and there is no dollar amount, and it services 20 or 40 people. Could you tell me what that amount of money is?
Did you understand it, the question?
It's Hopwa funds.
Okay.
My understanding is that it's $441,000. Is that accurate?
Okay, it's Hopwa funding? So yes, this is Kelly, Councilmember Capriolo. The allocation to the city from HUD that was announced on the 14th of June for the Hopwa funding was $441,000 and some change. With the exception of some administrative allocation there, the majority of that funding is being recommended to go towards West Care for services that that agency provides specifically for the housing surrounding individuals with AIDS and HIV.
That was added, you did $360,000, that's already on your list. Is that correct?
It is not added on. No, 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 it is, well, it's, there's a couple of years of funding for Hopwa that are going to be awarded.
Okay. So it's, it's those $360 plus the $440, for a total of around $760,000, those West Care under homeless services.
Correct. So I am having a trouble understanding because I think that we're cutting out about every third word here, but yes, it would be for a prior year funding that has not been contracted yet, plus the annual allocation for this year. So it would be two years of funding, I think, that you're referencing for the Hopwa, and that's specifically for AIDS and HIV.
So that in combination with the $360,000 would equal over $750,000?
Yes, yes. So yes, that is correct, that same agency would be getting those funds for a completely different activity, correct?
Okay, thank you. All I have on that. Can you hear me well enough, Council President?
I can hear you.
Okay, I'll speak slowly. I wanted to thank Michelle DeBudio at Valley Caregivers for all the wonderful things they do for our community. And I don't know if there's a group or organization or nonprofit that gives 100% of the funds or services with no dollar going to Valley Caregivers, et cetera. I can't think of any other program that does 100% of the funding for services. So thank you, Michelle and Valley Caregivers. I also wanted to thank the lady that has a family member with ALS. She is absolutely correct. She matches shoes. Someday, we're going to walk in shoes. Well, as many of you know, to fit in those shoes, and it's not a good thing. My father passed away about eight years, six months ago from Alzheimer, and it was extremely difficult for our family. We certainly could have used Valley Caregivers and all the things they provide to families, especially to my mother. She did everything she could to keep my father at home. It honestly wore her out, and I saw that. I told my mom, this has got to stop, and I'm convinced because often the care provider receives the care in death. With that, fortunately, my mom did that as long as she could, and I remember one story, she could not leave the house because she tried and left the food in the microwave for my dad, and said, oh, you have to press the button, cook the food, and I will be back in an hour and a half. She came back, the food was on the table, uncooked and sliced. So my mom couldn't even take an hour and a half off of her schedule with my father and her dedication to our family, my dad. Had we known about Valley Caregivers, it would have been such a wonderful, enlivening thing for my mom. I'm telling you to get emotional, but it's very emotional to me. So fortunately, we had insurance for my father, and we put, admitted him to free services before he received the final two-year services before his household bank. But Valley Caregivers is an amazing organization. I've been involved with them for the obvious reasons I just stated, and I can't thank them enough for what they do, just to give a family an hour or eight hours of one day for them to do something for themselves without feeling guilty about the dedication to the family member. So thank you again. I sincerely appreciate that. With that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to approve the HCT recommendation for Valley Caregivers and reduce that amount to $70,000, excluding support from parks, that is, not from hot meals or after-school services. That's my motion. I'd like to add to that, that since District Four has no community center, we do not receive 70,000 people in the district, remember that. A lot are seniors, we have more seniors than any other district. So we all have seniors, but I cannot tell you that I get any hot meals for my seniors. I cannot tell you that I receive any after-school programs for my constituents in District Four. However, that was my motion.
Can you repeat your motion, please?
Yes. I move that we approve the recommendation of HCT to fund Valley Caregivers in the amount, reduced amount of $70,000. reduced amount of seventy thousand dollars, excluding funding from parks, specifically hot meals and after-school programs.
I'm going to read it back. Okay, we have a second. Okay, we have a second. I'm going to read this back for everyone, I guess, to tell me if I heard it right. To approve the HCDC recommendation to fund Valley Caregivers, seventy thousand dollars, and I'm assuming, without taking money from parks, senior meals, and what was the last one? And after-school programs. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Are you finished?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Okay, um, City Attorney, just as a point of order and clarification, can you help me kind of navigate this? We have two motions that have been made. The screen is clear now, so it's time for voting. So we have two motions that are, um, that are currently here. First one by Member Brandow and seconded by Member Baines. This is, um, the amount for the Pavarello House to increase that from ten to twenty thousand dollars and increase to the Marjorie Mason Center, ninety thousand dollars.
And to take that money from West Care.
And to take from West Care. Okay. And then I have, I have two, I have the, the number two motion. This is made by Member Capriolio, seconded by Member Chavez. This is to fund Valley Caregivers, an amount of seventy thousand dollars, without taking from parks, specifically senior hot meals and after-school programs.
That's correct.
Okay, so how, um, are we doing this?
We would vote on those motions in order and see where we are at that point as far as the funding.
City Manager?
So for, uh, Councilmember Capriolio's motion, we would know, need to know where that's coming from, the seventy thousand that he's recommending.
I think that, um, and I'm, I'll just answer for him, but then I'll ask him, but I think that what he's saying is like, that, that staff has to, to figure that out. Um, let me find out. Member Capriolio?
Your, uh, your comment was?
My comment was what?
Correct.
Correct.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
So, um, if I may, Council President Jennifer Clark-Darm, so, um, for our adoption of the annual action plan, we need to have, um, specific dollar amounts allocated to specific activities that fit within the cap. So what we are being asked to do today, we're asking the council to say specifically of the dollars under the public service activity cap, how you are going to allocate those resources to which activities. Um, we cannot, at this point, if we do submit an application to HUD, essentially we would be over our cap by seventy thousand dollars because you haven't identified where, under that cap, it would be coming from. Um, so what we need, direction from the City Council, is where will that seventy thousand dollars come from? And if you look at page, um, I think it's, make sure I'm there, so we have pages four, forty-nine, fifty, and fifty-one. So forty-nine, you've said, no, it's not going to come from senior hot meals, so that hundred and twenty-seven is excluded. No, it's not going to come from parks after-school programs, so that five hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars is excluded. So that leaves you with Activity thirteen on page fifty-one, that's two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. Boys and Girls Club, thirty-three thousand dollars. EOC After School, thirty-nine thousand dollars. Stone Soup Career and Development Training, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Lowell CDC Education, twenty-two thousand dollars. It must come from one of those activities or a combination thereof to be able to accomplish your seventy thousand dollar move.
I would suggest that we take twelve percent from each of the funding sources you mentioned, or whatever that adds to would be the balance, start by the background noise, uh, next to, uh, Rose. Whatever amount that adds to would, uh, be the balance that I would ask for on behalf of Valley Caregivers. I wish Mayor Brinkley here, he could figure that out in five seconds with his, uh, knowledge of math.
He said, is this correct, Member Capriolio? You wish to take twelve percent from each individual item to fund?
Yeah, we, yeah.
So the motion will read, approve the HCDC recommendation to fund Valley Caregivers to seventy thousand dollars, excluding parks, uh, funding specifically, uh, senior hot meals and, um, after-school programs by, um, by cutting each individual, by each individual item by twelve percent. I mean, I'm trying to get to a motion here.
Yes.
Hang on.
I appreciate that. That only reduces the overall allocation to those other agencies to two hundred and two thousand dollars, so we're, that's, that gets you twenty-seven thousand dollars, but it doesn't get you seventy thousand dollars.
I would accept the twenty-seven.
Or you could say by the appropriate percent to get to the seventy thousand.
I think the twenty-seven thousand.
Proportional.
All right.
Twenty, oh, so Councilmember, did you just say twenty-seven thousand is your new motion for Valley Caregivers?
Yes.
So then, Member Capriolio, in your motion, it's no longer seventy thousand dollars, it's now twenty-seven thousand dollars?
Yes.
And the identified funding stream is?
The items we talked about.
The twelve percent from each other fund? Okay, I think we're there.
Okay, as identified, Director, pardon.
Okay, Member Bretafeld.
Yeah, so if I understand this correctly, then he's talking about making a cut to the Boys and Girls Club, uh, the EOC After School, Stone Soup Fresno Career Development and Training, Lowell CDC Tenant Education, is that correct? Okay, so he's talking about cutting the Boys and Girls Club and EOC. That's not something I'm gonna support.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, the screen is clear. Uh, we can, we can vote, and we'll vote by, um, roll call.
So what is his motion?
So the motion is, Member Capriolio's motion is, approve the HCDC recommendation to fund Valley Caregivers, twenty-seven thousand dollars additional, excluding parks specifically, no, it's twenty-seven thousand, specifically not after-school programs or senior hot meals, by reducing each other item by twelve percent. Member Brandow?
Well, I just want some clarification on the Boys and Girls Club. Um, well, yeah, is that part of after-school programming? And, and what I don't want to do is create, and I've already said this when I spoke a couple hours ago, I don't want to create a situation where we have, we have to back, we end up backfilling some of this from the general fund, so I don't know if that's, if that would happen, but I know, I'm just telling my colleagues that I don't believe in making a decision today that's gonna cost our general fund tomorrow or next week or next month, and so I'm a little worried about that. Uh, the, the Boys and Girls Club, because I think that is programming. Does that come through parks or?
Um, park staff, Christina or Karen, can you speak to, is there any additional money that comes from your budget for the Boys and Girls Club?
Oh, okay.
The, the answer is no extra money, but we do partner with them, so there may be some, uh, in-kind services, but no, no funding.
Is that in-kind service gonna cost our general fund, you know, to, or is it?
There's no impact to that. On some, we share facilities and offer joint, uh, programming, so.
Council President, I'll add something.
Yes.
The twenty-seven thousand dollars also includes a twelve percent reduction from Stone Soup, which is in my district. I'm willing to do what I'm asking others to do.
Uh, Member Capriolio said that the twelve percent reduction includes a reduction in the, um, allocation to Stone Soup, which is located in his district, and he's making that, uh, as a, as a gesture to show that it's, this isn't, he's not district-focused, but thinking of the entire city.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, Member Soria?
I, I just wanted to raise, I'm a little concerned because I get a little bit of those thirty-three thousand dollars for Inspiration Park. It's not a lot of money, and while I know twelve percent may seem like not a big percentage, I'm concerned that that would impact. I know that you also have El Dorado included in that, so you would be reducing those dollars for your Boys and Girls Club in District Four.
Thank you for bringing that to my attention, that's absolutely correct.
Member Soria, you finished? Okay, so is Council, City Manager, City Attorney, City Clerk, are we all on the same page on this? We understand?
Council President, let me, let me just, for a moment of clarity, i- is Councilmember Capriolio's motion simply to take twelve percent from Stone Soup?
Twelve percent from every other thing to make the, uh, allocation for Valley Caregivers twenty-seven thousand dollars.
And I would ask, Member Baines, that twelve percent, uh, I'm willing to do the same thing I'm asking others to do because Stone Soup would be giving in twelve percent, and the Boys and Girls Club are in Eld Rock Park as well, and I'm asking this, uh, to put a little bit into this very, very worthy cause.
Yeah. Councilmember Capriolio, you know, you're, you're a dear friend of mine. I can't support taking twelve percent from all the other, uh, all the other, um, service providers.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your candor.
The screen is clear. So, um, City Attorney, you said just vote on them in order?
Yes, vote on them in order, and then as amended, you'd vote on the final item altogether.
Okay, very good, final, okay. All right, um, Madam Clerk, can you, um, please take the vote by roll call? First, okay, the first one we're doing is the motion by Member Brandow, uh, to take the amount from the Pov, for the Pavarello House from ten thousand to twenty thousand dollars, and ninety thousand dollars, uh, from West Care to the Marjorie Mason Center. Um, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines?
She's taking a roll call vote.
Hi.
Brandow?
Yes.
Bretafeld?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Soria? President Olivia?
Yes.
Seven oh.
Okay, and the next item, approve, uh, this is Member Capriolio's, approve the HCDC recommendation to fund Valley Caregivers, twenty-seven thousand dollars, excluding parks specifically.
Council President, can I ask one quick question?
Of the maker of the motion?
To the staff.
Okay.
Uh, City, City Ma, or, or it may be Jennifer, um, the unallocated funds that we have, that we're gonna come back with our infrastructure projects, it, could, and this is a shot in the dark, I don't even know if my colleagues would, would support this, but for Councilmember Capriolio's twenty thousand dollars that he's looking for, could we take any of that money and put it there, or yes or no?
No, so that comes from public facilities and public improvements, under street improvements, it is not, uh, under the cap.
Eligible, okay, I was just, I was just making sure. Okay, thanks. Sorry, Cap.
Thank you.
You guys want me to read the motion again?
Oh.
Okay, then let's vote. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baines?
No.
Brandow?
No.
Bretafeld?
No.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Soria?
Olivia?
No.
So that's, um, two yeses and five nos, fails.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Member Capriolio, for calling in.
I have one more, uh, comment to make, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, the, now wait, before you go away, don't hang up. This is the, the final, we have to vote for the final item as amended.
Okay.
And the screen is clear. Uh, Madam Clerk, can you call the, the, the roll, please?
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Brandow?
Yes.
Bretafeld?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Soria? And Olivia?
Yes.
Seven oh.
Thank you. Member Capriolio, would you like to say something?
Yes, if I may, I'd like to direct the staff to consider Valley Caregivers, where we have future reprogramming, to be prioritized. And I recognize that it has to be under the cap of the program, but I'd like that direction to, uh, to give into staff as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
Actually, there was no main motion to approve the overall item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Member Brandow, seconded by Member Baines. Uh, are you still there, Cap?
I am.
Okay, we have to vote again.
Okay.
Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Baines?
Yes.
Brandow?
Yes.
Bretafeld?
Yes.
Capriolio?
Yes.
Chavez?
Yes.
Soria?
Yes.
Olivia?
Yes. Okay, that is that, thank you. Okay, um, I think the only item that we have left is, no action plan, uh, the ten-thirty item, the fifty, uh, five-hundred-thirty-fifth amendment to the master fee schedule, and this is from Parks.
Council President, I don't think I've been enough to vote on that item. I have to ask the attorney.
What? Can you say again, please?
I don't think I received, uh, notice on that item to enable me to vote.
I think you can just hang up if you, if you are finished. Yeah, everyone's nodding.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Cap.
Heartbroken, but thank you.
Hi.
Good afternoon. So before you, today's going to be, um, first, the presentation, PowerPoint presentation as you, as the council will recall, in June, we had brought forth a request to increase fees at the Shenzhen Garden, and the council had requested.
I'm sorry, can I stop you?
Yes.
Let's go ahead, we have someone that has to be somewhere, and we'll do Shenzhen Gardens, let me just put you on pause for a second. Um, and then we have a, a scheduled communication, someone who's been sitting here since eleven o'clock this morning, John Fino, will you please come forward? Yeah. Uh, Mr. Fino made a, a appointment to be here earlier and was granted five minutes for his remarks.
If I get a ticket, Mr. Capriolio could pay it. My time started. It said, "Good morning, Mr. President, members of the City Council," but it's "Good afternoon." Uh, the presentation today is memory of Jack Ferentino, a taxpayer's advocate of the past. Uh, I have two issues. Well, here's, here are pictures I've taken of dust and water waste that the City of Fresno is doing. I was driving down Herndon, and the dust was so bad, it almost caused an accident about three weeks ago. That got me on the, well, what got me on the dust, you know, this gentleman here discs lots to supplement his income, and Air Quality gave him a ticket for disking a lot and making dust. I said, "Really? The City of Fresno makes dust all day long." So anyway, they charged him twelve, uh, twelve-hundred-dollar fine, and they reduced it to six-hundred, that's real generous, uh, and so I got on that kick about the dust, and I said, "What about all this water running across the road from City Islands?" And that's what all those pictures are about, the dust and the water from the City of, at Fresno Air Terminal is on there too, water. Air Terminal's on there too, water all over the place, all over the asphalt Fresno Air Terminal, all over Clovis Avenue, all over Ingram, and there's people that sent me pictures from all over town that I didn't print out. So, anyway, I'm just curious what you're going to do about that. And in the meantime, I'll turn it over to my advisor, Stan Serini.
I've been trying to deal with this air pollution situation for about three years that we have in Fresno. I'm an advocate of getting rid of the leaf blowers, but I understand gardeners need to use them, and I think most of them do a pretty good job. I do live out at Woodward Lakes, and I have noticed there's a big problem with city workers. The city is the biggest culprit of our problems. And I drive down Friant Road out to Woodward Lakes, and numerous times, I'll be going down the road, and they'll be doing regular maintenance of the islands and the trees, and they will blow dust so thick that you can't see the road, and they'll continue to blow it. And here a while back, I almost got into a rear end with somebody that got into the mess, stopped because they were confused. I got into it and almost hit them. I understand, was John, was it yesterday or this morning? Yesterday morning. And I contacted them about that, and they say, "Well, that's not our problem." I contacted the San Joaquin Air Pollution Board. "Well, there's no law against leaf blowers." I know there's not a law against leaf blowers, but there's a law against putting that kind of dust into the air. I've been tagged on it myself. Yesterday morning, I think on Hernan Avenue between Ingram and Palm, they were doing the same thing, and there was a four-car pileup because of it. Now, I don't know who responded. I don't know if the PD responded or the CHP had to respond to that accident. This morning, they're doing the same thing again. They continue to just take those blowers and blow the dirt out of the islands onto the street. Then they blow the dirt up against the curb, and it's everywhere. I've contacted everybody about it, and their answer is unilateral. Take it to City Council. Take it to City Council. I don't know what you people can do about it. It's very difficult. I just believe that, like every government, they just feel they're above everybody else, and they can do what they want and create that kind of a problem. I'm sure, out of the nine of you, I think, that are sitting here, you know what I'm talking about. I guarantee you've driven through it, you've seen them do it. One time, I stopped to take pictures, they threatened me. They were going to have me arrested. I've sent pictures to the city, I've sent them to Air Pollution Control Board, I've sent them to the Fire Department. I've heard nothing in three years. We're bringing it to you. I'd like to know what you people would like to do about this. I know you don't like it either, and evidently, it's in your hands. Somebody needs to tell the city, "Hey, they made vacuum cleaners for years," you know? I don't know. That's where we're at at this thing, and I'd like to see something done. Thank you for your time.
What's your home address, sir? What's your home address?
Oh, San Quentin. 408 East Salmon River Drive.
408 East Salmon, do you know which council district that's in?
I don't know. Which one of you guys are mine?
Member Brettafeld is going to be more than happy to help you out.
And I apologize. I won't call anymore because I never get an answer. I get an aide, I leave a number, I never get a return phone call. Only one City Council person has ever called me in my whole life, Karen Humphrey. Shows you how long it's been.
Well, you can expect a phone call.
I just want to see something change. I don't need a call.
Thank you. Okay, and that, I think, now we can, thank you for waiting around so long. I think we can move now to Shenzhen Gardens or Parks Department.
Okay, good afternoon, Counsel. Back in June, we had brought before you a staff report requesting fee increases for the gate at Shenzhen Garden. And we do have three of our partners with us from Shenzhen, Dwayne, Sally, and Susanna, and they will be coming up later to address any questions that you may have directly for them. But what I'd like to do is, from the request from June, was to provide a short workshop, give a brief but comprehensive overview of the garden, and in particular, our partnership with the organization. And we have provided a PowerPoint, and I believe each of you have hard copies at your dais, and I'll be using that as our guide through the overview. And then, I would appreciate having the opportunity to go through that as an entire presentation, then come back for specific questions. We'll be glad to go back to individual slides to address those particular questions. Okay, so, some background is, along with several of our partnerships that we have established, the city had gone through some pretty severe economic downturns, and we had begun partnering with local organizations and groups to help us in a variety of different ways and services. And one of those is with our Shenzhen Garden. So, the garden itself was envisioned by city leaders. It emerged from the era of our sister city. It was intended to embrace peace and brotherhood at the time and recognize the contributions of the Japanese-American community here in Fresno. And the groundbreaking event was in 1975, and then the actual dedication was in 1981, after the garden had grown to be something that you could come and visually enjoy. And the funding was provided by individuals, the community and the city, so it was a collaborative effort in that implementation of the garden as we now enjoy it. Over the years, it has been improved, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we go forward in our presentation. But it was designed by Shirin Nakagawa, Paul Saito, Koto, and I'm sorry, I'm probably butchering these names, Matsubaro, and the City of Fresno. And then, it was in 1981 that Shenzhen Friendship Garden Incorporated was formed. And then, in 2011, we formalized a more robust agreement with that organization and provided specific charge to the board, and I'll summarize that, which is encapsulated into MOU, formal MOU, that we have the city with that group. So, the next slide actually talks a little bit about the major improvements that have been made since its inception. The garden itself grew from three to five acres with the addition of the Uma Grove, and that was provided by Tara Family. And in '89, we were able to add the Authentic Ceremonial Tea House. That was a dedication and commitment of the Board of Directors' president and partially gifted by our sister city, Kochi, Japan. And then, most recently, in 2014, the site was selected as the recipient of the World Class Clark Bonzi Collection. And in 2015, we were able to conduct a grand opening in partnership with the Golden State Bonzi Federation. So, the memorandum of understanding between the city and the organization, again, I'm going to do a summary of that. So, from the perspective of the City of Fresno, we are the owner of the land. We are responsible for maintaining health and safety repairs within the garden. We're responsible for maintaining the irrigation system. We do maintain the Koi Pond, and then, we actually are the entity that hires and supervises the staff that man the interior Shenzhen Garden gate employees. And then, we do provide maintenance support as funding is available and as scheduling allows. So, that element of support has varied and been sporadic over the years, but currently, we're offering a level of service that equates to about 25% of a full-time individual laborer. In years past, it has been up to about 3/4 of a full-time person. So, from Shenzhen's part of it, as our partner, they provide us with a Board of Directors and staff to provide the leadership and in meeting the vision, the fiscal responsibility, and the overall advancement of the garden. They provide supplemental and special maintenance needs of the garden, and they solicit volunteers to assist with overall operations of the garden. They conduct numerous fundraising and special event activities. They solicit donations, and they also have a membership that provides funding for those purposes. And they are responsible for the overall promotion and marketing of the garden. They are solely responsible for those special events and group rentals of the garden. And again, we'll speak a little bit more to that as we proceed into our presentation. And the costs, I should have mentioned this too, the costs associated, going back to the city's portion of our contributions, are funded out of, first, funded out of the gate fees, so that primarily funds our staff that man the gate, and then, whatever portion may be available to offset the cost of the actual maintenance and any other improvement, general improvements.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So, the revenues that you're getting from coming in, people paying to come into the garden, are they enough to cover what the city's expenses are at this point?
They do not cover 100% of that, and that's where we'll get into the financial, finances, I should say. So, then, on the portion of the fundraising that's conducted by the organization, the Shenzhen nonprofit, all of their costs that they maintain, improve, or whatever, come out of those revenue sources directly. Any and all revenues that are received by Shenzhen are 100% dedicated to the improvement and operation of the garden. So, here is a slide that represents, this is from the City of Fresno, revenues received, and what we did is we used a four-year average. And the average was fiscal years 2013 through 2016. And the average that we received for our gate fees specifically in the garden were roughly around $35,000. And our expense, which I'll go to in our next slide, but I wanted just to highlight some of the percentages of what that represents, because I know there were some questions at our last meeting, the total numbers by designation of youth, adult, et cetera. So, again, these are averages. So, over that four-year span, the revenue that was received represents about 35% in the category of the adult fee, 23% for senior and child, and then about 42% in the family. I do want to highlight, though, that in 2017, we are trending much higher than that, and I will give credit to the staff that they have brought on for the marketing and promotion, and then, most significantly, the Bonzi Collection has really drawn people from all over the world, quite frankly, to come see that. So, we are trending higher, but again, to give an illustration of what we and our partnership has been, we're using these four years as an illustration, for illustration purposes. Christine, for the, given the trends this year, will that be enough to cover the expenses? And we'll get to that. We will. So, the next slide is talking about expenses. So, the four-year average, again, please keep in mind my earlier comment about our participation as far as the maintenance levels have been very sporadic, from 3/4 of a percent to this year, about 1/4 of a percent of a full-time person. It had been our goal to accommodate, we have a list of items that we have agreed to do, that are general maintenance things that we may or may not do on a very regular basis based on our scheduling and availability of staff. So, this year in particular, we had several vacancies, and so, priorities of where those individuals were concentrating their efforts. The garden had less coverage than in normal years, I will say, but again, it's been all over the board for the last four years, so there hasn't been a constant that I can say, yes, this is what our real picture is, I guess, other than using the average. So, I do feel comfortable and confident using that as this illustration. So, for an average, our expenditures have been around $56,000. So, if you take that expense minus the $35,000, you can see what we've been, quote, subsidizing out of general fund, which is not that, we were not expecting to do that because we had agreed that on those maintenance levels that we would, as a city, be doing those. Our intent was to try to do cost recovery out of those gate fees, and that's what's prompting this request, to look at those fees and increase them to help reduce that and to assure cost recovery occurs. So, again, I'm giving just a generalized breakdown of the four-year average. 30% of them have been, 30% is usually funding that portion of a full-time person, and then, 58% of that is with the temporary staff, which is primarily those individuals who man the gate at Shenzhen Garden. And then, very little is direct operations and maintenance. So, the next slide represents what the Shenzhen Garden Friendship Incorporated has done over the last four years. Again, these are through various funding sources, revenue generation, donations, membership, special events, et cetera. And on average, they generate about $100,000 a year in support, again, directly going back into the improvements and promotion of the garden. So, again, percentage breakdown of that average of $100,000. 42% comes from private events. Donations and grants represent 28%. Specific garden events and programming is 17%, and membership, about seven, with miscellaneous other about six. Again, this is taking into consideration fiscal years 2013 to '16. So, this kind of shows the efforts that they are doing and in supporting of those improvements is pretty significant. And the next slide will share some of those major projects. Okay, so, I broke this down to some fiscal years. There's been other general improvements made, but these are the most significant. So, in 2016, the Tea House had a roof replacement that was around $36,000. The Clark Bonzi Collection, if you've been out at the garden, you will note that there's a new whole entire garden area that was constructed for the placement and display of the Bonzi Collection. That was about $118,000. And then, to recognize the founders and supporters and donors, there was a donors' board construction in 2014 at the tune, about $17,000. And then, in 2012, we were able to do a parking lot slurry seal at the garden parking lot. And those, I asterisked to say that that came from our gate fees. So, in our memorandum of understanding is, any funds that may be, quote, extra after paying city expenses first, stay in there for future improvements. So, that was, at that time, we had a funding balance, so we used those monies to do that work. Okay, so, wanted to share just a little bit of the value of the Shenzhen Friendship Garden. And for local uses, it provides a unique environment for people to come and enjoy and have special events and activities. The garden representatives do a lot of partnerships and offer opportunities for service sites, like for Fresno State, the Central Unified Interact Students, and the Church of Latter Day Saints. So, they come out and do their community projects. They also do a variety of other school tours and et cetera. And then, on a national and international level, it really is something that I think we need to highlight here for ourselves is that we may, from the inside of city, look at that as a great, beautiful asset, but it really has become a destination point. And it's not just a national destination, it is an international. We have notoriety because primarily of the garden itself, but with the add of the, addition of the Clark Bonzi Collection. And it should be noted that, of all the places here in Fresno, Woodward Park ranks number three, followed by Shenzhen Garden specifically as number four. And so, we have a lot of credit to our sister city programming for the international visitation, and the Clark Bonzi has really been something that is a coveted collection that all over this nation, in particular with California, there was a lot of disappointed people that they were not the recipient, and Fresno was. So, we need to applaud the efforts that made that possible. So, with that, there is an economic development or economic impact that we haven't quantified, but we do know that it draws people from all over the world, so want to highlight that as well. And then, going back to our original request was for an increase in the gate fees to help offset the requests from the Bonzi Committee in that they would like to see us extend the hours and the days of operation to allow more people to come and enjoy that beautiful amenity, that destination point that people are wanting to come see the Bonzi Collection. And it has been our policy to try to, again, recoup and offset any direct costs using those gate fees first. So, that's what we're doing. So that was why we came as a recommendation to the council to consider an increase in those gate fees to offset the additional costs that would occur with us extending those hours and days of operation. And I will, the next slide will show a comparison of our local market that has similar types of attractions. So I want to highlight in particular the Underground Garden, because I feel that that is what most aligns with our Shenzhen Garden. And you will see on that chart that they, how we've broken it down is that first column lists the different organizations, the hours of operation, and then if they have a designated fee structure, that will be the next column. So for example, the Underground Gardens, their, sorry, I have a tiny slide here, their children's rate is $8, adult entry fee is 17, senior entry fee 15. So currently, our Shenzhen Garden comparatively, $1 for children, $5 for adult, and $1 for senior. And the proposal to council today is to increase the children's fee from 1 to 3, the adult fee would stay the same, the senior entry would go from $1 to $3, and then the family rate, which is the only entity that has that rate, is us, from 7 to 10. So if you take some, again, going back to the Underground Gardens, because I feel that's the most representative, the Shenzhen, for a family of just three, two adults and one child, versus what our family rate is, it's a significant difference, much more affordable for us to have entry into the Shenzhen Garden. So with the recommended hours, the additional hours and days, we estimated that the costs or expenses related to that are going to be right around $20,000, give or take. With the proposed increases, based on what we're looking at as the average, would be about, generate about $24,000. Again, any over or additional revenues are always maintained for future improvements, or first, to pay 100% of the city's expense, so that would recoup some of the costs associated with the maintenance piece of it, and then anything above that on both sides goes back into the improvements of the garden. So I have just one or two more slides. And the ladies behind me can speak more directly to this, but they wanted to share some of their strategic planning for the future. They want to identify certain things that are going to be related to them fulfilling their vision for the garden, and that's to continue collaborating with the city. We have enjoyed partnership with them for many years, and they're doing wonderful things out there. They would love to be able to hire a full-time professional gardener. They want to develop a formal tenure strategic plan that will help both of us get to that end result, and more. They want to advance the cultural celebrations and partnerships, engage with community and supporters to ensure the financial sustainability of the garden, telling the Shenzhen story through the community connections and marketing and public relations that they are continually expanding on. And again, going back to the main reason why we're here today, increasing the hours of operation. And then maintaining and securing a dedicated board of directors to ensure that that vision is met. And lastly, part of that strategic planning, some of the main highlights of planned or wanting to accomplish as far as capital improvements, so specifically for enhancements, looking at installing electrical service for supporting special events and lighting. So the next one is lighting projects, and then, which is a priority for the city, as you all know, on all of our parks, is to upgrade, improve, and replace irrigation. And then they have identified a major project that they would like to look at, starting to design and implement probably in about five years as a multi-use facility, and that encompasses more of a museum, cultural arts, or a cultural center, I should say, maybe with permanent restrooms there, and then some kind of banquet facility that would accommodate and complement the special events and fundraising efforts that take place there for revenue generation. So that is a brief, but hopefully comprehensive overview of our partnership regarding Shenzhen. And as mentioned, we'd be glad to answer questions before going on to our formal request of increasing the fees, which will be the staff report that will come after questions and dialogue between us, and we have the representatives here to answer any specific questions that you would have on their efforts.
I got a couple of questions.
We're going to go out to the public.
Oh.
At this time, let's go out to the public, is there anyone here who wishes to address this agenda item? Please come forward. All right, at this time, we'll close public comment, seeing no one, and return to council. Member Chavez, you're up first.
So, I'm looking through your PowerPoint, so I just want to make sure I'm clear, so it costs $56,000 a year to operate the garden, is that correct?
On average, using those four years, 2013 to 16, from the city's staff and the city's contribution for operations, yes, 56.
So what's the total cost of the whole operation?
Well, when you take into consideration some of their improvements, I don't have the detail of that, we highlighted those major portions, but they fund any additional expense out of their fundraising, membership, and other donations and other revenue solicitation. They are required and do provide the city with a financial report, and they give us quarterly updates on that, so if you would like to see a formal report, we'd be glad to forward that to you.
Sure. I would, I'd like to see that. So then the $35,000 in revenue, is that just the entrance fees that we collect?
Correct, yes.
On that? I remember the last time we had this conversation, I asked a question with regards to the fee that is charged for folks that want to go in there and take pictures with their family, I think it's $50 or $75. How much, how many of those entrances are usually generated there at the fee? Is that common, or is that not very common?
I will ask that they address that.
Okay.
The photography and special event management has, in 2014, we removed those fees from the city's master fee schedule, we had them in place. They are a little bit higher now than what they were when the city operated them, but those activities are, were 100% given over to the organization to organize, so I don't know what the frequency is on that. And I did want to clarify again that the photography is for commercial photographers, and that we need, we, the city, will be educating our staff, that it's not just when somebody has a camera that they're asking for that fee. So the experience that I believe you shared, hopefully was an isolated incident, that the staff was not properly trained in what we mean or what they mean by that. So it really is for a professional photographer who comes in doing photo shoots, they would be charged that. Any commercial photography would be asked to pay that fee, but...
Sure, and I totally understand, if they're going to be making money off of calendars or something, they absolutely should be paying, but not our local folks that are going there to take family pictures or something of that sort. So I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm just going to just jump right to what I need to support this. I like to keep the senior amount at $1, I'm okay with the other increases, and then eliminating that, that picture-taking fee for our locals, local folks that show up there, but I want to hear what my colleagues have to say about this, especially Member Brettafeld that represents the area.
Okay, if I may just clarify that, as far as the fee, that's not part of, the photography fee is not part of our recommendation, because it's not under our jurisdiction. The fees that are included in our master fee schedule that are managed in, under the control of the city are those entry fees.
Sure, but if I understand it correctly, that's not being charged right now to the general public, it's only for commercial purposes, is that correct?
When we were under that, when we had the fee, and now that they have it, was always commercial photography, that hasn't changed.
Okay.
But we don't, we no longer have that in our fee schedule, it's now part of it.
Sure.
Okay.
Understood, thank you.
Question for you, Christine, so, the Shenzhen Friendship Garden, Inc., you look at their numbers each year.
Correct.
Are they profitable?
They are profitable, but they also have all of the expense highlighted there, everything that comes in is a direct, goes directly to support activities at the garden. Any balance in their funding, which they do have, is either designated for specific projects or held for general improvements. And again, I'll be glad to, and I should have brought a copy of that for you, but the, any of the three ladies, I'm sure would be glad to answer specific questions on their operations, that...
Well, I'd like to know, you know, what the profit is that they have after their expenses, is that something that you can answer?
And if you would, Dwayne, introduce yourself and your role with the...
My name's Dwayne Barrett, and I'm the current president of the board. And we, when you talk about profits, we are a 501(c)(3), so I think as Christina mentioned, any overage or under that we have is carried over for the next year.
Okay, but the issue is, I mean, do you have a profit, do you have, after expenses, $100,000, $10,000, you know, $50,000, I mean, what do you have? Because that's important information for us to determine whether we want to increase fees on the citizens.
Good afternoon, I'm Sally Ramidge, do you need my address? No, okay. I have handled quite a few of the capital projects. On an annual basis, we would probably see a, an end-of-the-year overage or under, you know, over or under budget, somewhere less than $5,000. In 2015, it was a little higher than that, because we have had some changes in staff and time without staff. But our revenues come in, they all go to support our programs and services, and they do not affect the gate fees at all. Those are a city issue. Our revenues come in to support our cultural experience, cultural events, our landscape maintenance, that adds to what the city does, but the city does no general planting or sustaining of our, of that maintenance, of those plantings, and we add those, so it goes to landscape and support of some of the facilities that we have to, if we want to paint them, if we want to do a new roof, if we want to add the bonsai garden, which we did. So those are what our revenues, if we have any overage, go. And over the years, we've invested quite a bit of money in that garden facility.
Sure.
Is that helpful?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Christina, so, when we do the comparative analysis, that you were saying with the other agencies, Forest Year, Underground Gardens, do they have an entity set up like Shenzhen Garden does, or is it solely city money? Is there, is there an entity at all that's doing what these fine folks are doing?
I don't think we have any...
I can't hear you.
I can't answer that, but I don't think we're involved with that garden, are we?
Oh, the question was, you know, we were doing a comparative analysis of Forest Year Underground Gardens, and I was asking, like Shenzhen, there's a company, well, 501(c)...
The city has no involvement with the other garden, I was using that as the experience is the most similar to Shenzhen as far as comparing...
So you're referring to the experience.
Comparing the type of amenity, or, you know, if I went to Disneyland, it's the same as going to Knott's Berry Farm, that's the example why I highlighted them, is that it's a very similar experience. The city has nothing to do with the other one, but it gives the comparison, if I'm going to the Underground Garden, what am I paying versus going to Shenzhen Garden, to show that comparison.
Okay, and I'm trying to do a comparison between entry fees and the costs associated with those, with these different entities that you indicated. So, is Shenzhen Garden the only attraction that has this other, what is it?
No, there are asterisks by Arte Americas, Discovery Center, the Fresno Art Museum, and the Sammokkeen River Parkway Trust all have 501(c)(3)'s, but I have no financial or history on what their operations are or not.
Okay, alright.
But we, as a city, do not have the relationship with any of those, like, and I don't believe they have any other relationship with any other organization that jointly operates like we do with this group.
Right, so this is, yeah, this is unique. And they're obviously investing a lot of money in keeping the gardens up and making sure they're as beautiful as they are. Your request is to, for the city to increase these fees so we can not have a shortfall on the city side as we do things?
Correct, in particular, because the city still manages the staff. We hire, supervise, and schedule the staff out at that gate, that with their request to have us consider increasing the number of days and hours that we're open to the public, then we are asking to offset those costs, so that we're minimizing the cost to specifically, I mean, it is in sense of general fund, but that is a cost recovery. So we're doing our best estimate based on the last four years, knowing with the hours that we're looking to expand, what that impact would be is around $20,000. We looked at the history of the attendance levels and where we're kind of amping up, so with those increases in fees, we should be covering 100% of those extra hours of operation for that staff, if that makes sense.
Yeah, okay.
At a tune of around 20 to 25,000.
Okay, and Councilmember Chavez, you're just wanting to keep the senior rate at $1. Okay, alright, thank you.
I have a question, is there a reason why the adult entry fee remained the same?
I think part of it was, and if you want to help me back that up, but was looking at our overall attendance levels by those age brackets, and we felt that having the increase in the family, because the majority of those that come in, and that's the best value, if I was there with a family, that that would make more sense than the individual adult. In trying to increase fee to match that demographic, if you will, of what our history has been with that entry, that type of entry.
Okay, and then the other question that I had for the student fee, which goes from $1 to $3, is that the fee that the schools are charged when they do the field trips? Or do you guys have a special group rate? How does that work out? I just want to make sure that we are not discouraging our local school districts from, you know, taking kids on group tours or so forth.
My name is Susannah Figaro, and I'm the operations director, manager of Shenzhen. The school tours are separate, and that is a $3 fee, has been ever since the beginning.
Okay.
It's just separate for any, anyone who is attending school and can provide a school ID, it can be a high school student, or it can be a college student. The student fee that we're talking about.
Okay.
It can be an adult with a student ID and can pay an entry fee of $3.
Okay, thank you. And those group rates, they're not reflected on this fee schedule or the master fee schedule, is that something that we keep track of? How does that also...
When you say the group rates...
Well, she said that there's group rates for schools.
The tours?
Yeah, so I'm just wondering why that's not reflective on here, because if, if we're also using those to cover the expenses?
Those are, that's part of their income that they have for their programming, they do their own programming and special events, that's part of their...
Okay, so that's separate.
...fee structure, correct.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm having trouble, I will be very honest, I'm having trouble in terms of just having, you know, some of these fees increased, I appreciate trying to just not make the increase for the seniors, but I don't know if I'd be supportive of an across-the-board increase for children, you know, students, veterans, and so forth today, thank you.
All right, I just have a couple of, and this may not be for city staff, but for the folks from the gardens themselves. Do you, are you familiar with the Central Valley Community Fund? Do you have a fund set up there? I mean, yes, come forward, someone who knows about that, you do have one set up there?
Sally Ramidge, yes, we do have an endowment fund with Central Valley Community Foundation, we have also pursued grants from them. Those grants are for educational programs, for example, that support our school tours that, for which, you know, we grant to, you know, and to develop a digital tour, but, so we have an endowment with them. Right now, it is not enough in order to, for any distribution of funds to Shenzhen on an operational basis. Our, this, so that is a separate entity from what the city does in terms of running the gate. Our, the endowment fund is basically for the sustaining of the, of the programs and services, events, and cultural features of our, of the Shenzhen Garden.
Okay. Well, I mean, it says here on the, on the list of needs, this, this little graphic with the arrows pointing to the right, I mean, a lot of these things can be done, don't need the city to do. Like increasing community awareness?
And they don't, and that's why I want to clarify that, we, as a city, have engaged... And they don't. And that's where I want to clarify that. We, as a city, have engaged them in a formal contract. We are asking them to do all of those things and to raise money on their own to make sure they're doing them. And so that's part of the MOU. What we are in charge of as a city are primarily those employees who work the gate. So if we are to extend, if we want to support the request and increase the opportunity for people to go to Shinzen, we then would be extending hours of our staff. To offset the cost of that, our recommendation was to raise those fees to accommodate that increase.
Okay.
But as far as the, the programs, the services that are directly, we have contracted with them to manage and do all of those programs, special events and everything. The city's responsibilities are primarily with health and safety maintenance, some general landscape maintenance, and specifically for those employees working the gate. Everything else, we have asked that they manage, operate, and market, promote, et cetera.
And so the total that you're hoping to raise with the fee increase?
Is around $20,000.
Around $20,000.
Ask a quick question?
Please.
So when you say the city, you were trying to raise money for our employees at the gate, you're talking about the Shinzen Garden, not the gate for Woodward Park?
Correct. Specifically the Shinzen entry, because it was, at the time that the agreement was made, the city had wanted to maintain the management and supervision of the staff that are in the gate. So, any additional hours, the city is having to pay for those staff members.
So why not, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but why not just have a volunteer work the gate? Why do we have to have a city employee work the gate if it's more economical?
It was our direction that we were, so if that's...
Is that what we want? Why don't we just have a volunteer staff the gate and save all that money? And probably, no, you'd like to have a city employee working the gate instead of a...
I think that was part of it, and then to have regular...
Is part of the original MOU?
That's still in existence.
Well, can we change it? Is there any willingness to change that?
I don't know what their volunteer basis is. If any of you have ever worked with volunteers, to have a regular schedule where we're saying we're open from so, such and such time to manage those volunteers may be a challenge.
Yeah, and we can absolutely look into that. I need to pull up the MOU and see what the terms are and, you know, the expiration date of the MOU, but we can definitely look into that, especially as it comes up for renewal.
Because to my knowledge, is this, is this the only nonprofit in the city that actually runs with, that the city pays staff? I know I went to go buy tickets at Storyland and Playland, and Susan Anderson was sitting in the ticket booth. And if you all know Susan Anderson, she's a former supervisor. She was taking the tickets at their booth. So, my question is, why is it that Shinzen Gardens has to have a city employee being paid to be there and other, other places, places that you compete with do not?
And we can look into that with the MOU, for sure.
And the other thing to remember that I think you kind of just touched on is that there's a parking fee. So, I mean, we get them when they drive in, and then we get them at the gate, and I'm unable to support an increase in the entrance fee at this time, at least until we figure out if, if that money can be saved by eliminating the city employee. I mean, is it, is it safe to assume that a city employee ticket taker is more expensive than a ticket taker provided by the free market or a volunteer? Like, how, what do we pay?
We pay minimum wage for those employees.
So that would be the same as a, okay. No, I'll be unable to, to support an increase today. All right, with that, the screen is clear. Let's go ahead and vote electronically. Was there a motion? I didn't even think there was a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept staff's recommendation. And I think Councilmember Chavez said he didn't want, and I'll take Councilmember Chavez's recommendation as well as not raising the senior fee. Yeah, keeping the senior fee as is.
I mean, then if we, if we reduce the senior fee, then that's not going to provide the revenue that they want.
It's not reduced, just keep it the same at $1.
Okay, what, was it supposed to go up? It was scheduled to go up?
Yeah, $3.
It was scheduled to go up to $3, so they're going to lose a significant portion of revenue.
24% of their revenue.
Well, and let me just add, I think, I think...
I think we want to help them, and then we're like, okay, we'll help you, but we don't want to raise this fee, so you're, you're still not going to get the revenue that you want.
Well, yeah, I think though that the, that the senior and child fee combined accounts for about 23% of their overall revenue, so not just raising the senior fee, I would suspect doesn't impact it as dramatically as if we say didn't raise the family fee, which accounts for 42% of their overall revenue. So I understand where Councilmember Chavez is coming from with that, where it may not be as dramatic of a hit as otherwise if we were, if we would not raise fees in other areas.
Okay, thank you. Let's go and vote electronically.
Let me, can I ask a question first?
Yeah, go ahead, Member Bradfield.
So I want to ask the nonprofit, is it possible that you can have somebody from your organization who is actually collecting the revenue or being at the gate? Can I hear?
Very difficult to house something like that, as Christina said, with volunteers, where you have to guarantee your hours of operation, that you need someone there, and managing all that is very difficult. I want to emphasize too that what we're asking for is not just a fee increase, it's to have the garden open and available to visitors more. Right now, for instance, during the week, we have it open 4 to 7. Often, if I'm out there, you have people at the gate, "When are you open? When can you come in?" And of course, the morning hours in Fresno in the summer are the ideal time to be there. So, a lot of this promotion on our part to increase fees is to be able to be open more so the community and visitors can have more access to the garden. How many of you have been out there recently? It's beautiful, isn't it? Right, so, you know, to have that more available is really an underlying wish for us.
You know, and let me just add, I didn't make a lot of comments during, during this time, but I just want to say that as an overall issue, that we have these wonderful amenities in our community, and Shinzen Gardens is one of them. And while I know it's always painful to have a discussion about raising fees or not raising fees or what have you, we do need to be responsible to make sure that we take care of our assets, and this is one of our assets, one of our gems. People do use it. We want them to continue to use it. We obviously want them to have greater access to it. If, if, if my colleagues or anything like me, we always hear people in Fresno saying there's nothing to do, nowhere to go. Well, we do have things to do, and we do have places to go, and we have to make these tough choices. I don't think the fee increases are completely onerous. I'm not exactly sure that a fee increase of $1 or $2 is going to turn someone away from coming, but I think it allows them to, to get the, make sure they can make the repairs as needed without the general fund having to always subsidize that. So, I've been supportive all along. Sorry, I didn't say that earlier, but it made a lot of sense to me that, that we want to do this, which is why I made the motion.
And if I could just clarify, one piece of this is that the organization who is marketing and promoting it, that they get the phone calls, they get the requests, came to us with that information with the recommendation to extend hours. They did not initiate the fee request staff did. It has been our past practice to minimize and try to do cost recovery. So, their request to add hours, extend days, would equate to us, as a city, having to hire or extend the cost for employee services, and therefore, it's our recommendation to offset that through the fee increase. So hopefully that clarifies that. The request of the group is to extend hours to allow people to come to the garden. It's staff's recommendation. The way to fund that is to increase fees.
Could you do a combination of having, I mean, I've already heard four or five times that, you know, that it's, it's critical to have the doors open longer. Could we use a city employee and a volunteer? Or am I to understand that the facility can only open if a city worker opens it and takes the tickets?
The structure that's in place now requires city staff there, and that was why we came with our recommendation to accommodate the increase in hours would require us to have additional staff. We, I mean, an alternative would be to increase the days and hours, and just from general use, that could fund those, but it's my due diligence to come to you with the solution of, here's what we're expecting that cost to be, and here's a way that we can...
Well, to me, if the board was amenable to the idea, I think that we should try to open it for more days and hours and hope that people come and collect that money as opposed to raising fees. I mean, I just have a problem with, with raising fees. People are going to have a, have a, have to pay to park, and then they have to, I mean, the fee, everything's going up, the cost, everything is going up. Gasoline is about to go way up. I mean, it doesn't sound like a lot, but when one on top of the other, on top of the other, on top of the other, it's becoming very expensive for working families, especially if you want people from my district to go to your facility. The average, or the median household income of my neighbors is $29,000 a year. And so, they, they can't afford to go to the beach, and they can't afford to go to Dodger game or Giant game, so they have to look for alternatives around here. And as, as their representative on this, on this board, it just, it really pains me to say, "Oh, you know what? You guys have to come up with this extra money." And while it doesn't sound like a lot of money to us, the people who live near me, it could be cost prohibitive, choosing between gasoline and groceries. And so, I mean, I'm not trying to be a grandstanding anti-fee guy. I'm sincerely trying to advocate for, for my neighbors, and so I don't want to vote for the fee increase.
Perhaps I could address one thing. There's been questions about volunteers. One of the things I want to make really clear is we do have a cadre of volunteers who spend, who are dedicated to actually doing landscape work, pulling weeds, replanting, watering. They can't, they are there. We have a dedicated group of volunteers who provide, who are docents, who provide tours and are there on the days that the garden is open to provide tours to the schoolchildren, the senior citizens, all of these people who come. So it's not that the volunteers are not available or there. They have assignments and responsibilities about the, to support the community in really experiencing and understanding the garden. We use it as an educational site and a training site for people who want to learn how to prune and carefully care for plants, so that's one thing. Then the only, the only other thing I would add, and I certainly respect the fact that raising fees is a concern for our whole population. One of the things we wanted, you know, when the city said, "Yes, we need to raise the fees in order to be open two more days," so instead of two days a week, we now would be open four days. We also are engaged in an alliance in the community, and one thing we're hoping to do is to have at least once a year a museum day where other locations in the city, as well as Shinzen, are open for free to come in for the families and children and individuals to experience this and see how valuable it is. And then those students who go with their schools get an opportunity through those school opportunities to engage in another learning experience in our community. So we're trying in the best way we can to meet all kinds of needs, and our, our garden really does respond to the broad-based community here. So anyway, I just thought you would know that we do have a really strong cadre of volunteers who work very hard to support this garden on behalf of our community. Thank you.
Is everybody done? All right, the screen is clear. Let's go and vote electronically, please. You need to show an ID card before you do that. Okay, the item fails, three votes to two. Thank you, staff. Now, on to scheduled public comment. Zoya is here, was here, and I skipped over him, and for that, I've already apologized. It's been kind of an interesting day. So, the floor is yours. You have three minutes.
Thank you for having me. I just wanted to, you know, earnestly invite you all to a vigil that the organization I represent, Transemotion, is putting on this Saturday at 9:00 p.m. This vigil is to honor the memory of Casey Hager. Many of you remember. I, two years ago, in July, when she was murdered, she was brutally stabbed in the neck and left her dead. And her murderer has still not been apprehended, and, and we definitely are aware of this and haven't forgotten. And we want to make sure the community doesn't forget and, and put the awareness out there so that if we hear or see anything, that we will go to the police and keep them up to date on all clues or, or anything that we think might be suspicious. So, again, this will take place this Saturday, July 22 at 9:00 p.m., and it will take place at Blackstone in Michigan. It's on Blackstone, just south a few blocks of Shields. And so we will be there and have speeches and chanting and, and light brigades. We're trying to get some lighting up that says in big letters, "Justice for Casey." After that, we will walk to Blackstone and Cornell, which was the actual site of her murder, and we will do a die-in. And so, this is very important to our organization. I don't know if any of you know, but she was coming to our meetings for about three months, and that was it, because she was killed. And so, I think it's very important that, as a community, we come together as Fresnans and say that we will not stand for this level of violence and injustice. It doesn't matter what minority group it is. Injustice to one is injustice to all. But this was a transgender woman, a member of our community. I think she was even in your district, Olivier. So, I do appreciate the support that Mr. Olivier Baines and Soria have given to us in the past. We don't forget that level of support, and so if you're able, we definitely encourage you to come out and join us this Saturday. I will send some emails as well. Some of you may have got emails already. And so, thank you for your time, and we really hope to see you there. We have invited police. The chief of police has been invited, as well as the FBI, and we're hoping that we can get as many folks out there to attend. We do expect media, and, and hopefully many community members show up. And so this wonderful woman did not die in vain. Thank you so much.
You know, and I thank you for those comments, because I remember vividly, it seems like it was just yesterday that Casey was murdered, just right around the corner from my home, and I saw that video. It's so disturbing, and it's, it's a sickening video that these people that did this, that stabbed her in the neck, are just free and out there and somewhere. And I think that what I will be able to announce to you is, and we, I don't know if we've had any tips or if they're working on it, or if the case has gone cold, but I will pledge to increase that reward on this anniversary. Okay, it's still active, so they're still looking for leads. So I will, I will talk to the appropriate people and increase that reward, and then that, that will hopefully help you increase media attention on this, this anniversary. Yeah, he was here today. Okay, all right, we'll make it happen. If you send out the emails, then we'll make sure that, that the word gets out. Right, thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you for being patient with us. Okay, we are done with everything that we do publicly. We still have a couple of closed-session items, correct? Folks who are here, is there anything that I can help you with? We do unscheduled communication, but that's closed, but if you're here for some kind of business, maybe I can help point you the right direction. Oh, for the Shinzen? Oh, okay. All right, thank you. City attorney?
Yes, we are returning to closed session. We've already made the announcement. I would not expect any announcements out here afterwards.